Now, we're good.
Good evening and welcome. I will call together the call to order the Yakima City Council Study Session for April the 22nd, 2025. And tonight's session is a joint session between our county commissioners and our city council. I want to welcome the commissioners here. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Curtis to call them to order.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and call the Board of Yakima County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Present today, we have Commissioner Lindy, Commissioner McKinney, myself, Commissioner Curtis.
And would you give a roll call for the city council, please?
Bird.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Myers.
Present.
Dicio.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy. Councilmember Roy. It's not present.
Thank you. Before we start tonight, I actually want to make two brief recognitions. We had last, last week, I introduced our new captain to police department, Captain Janice. And tonight, I'd like to introduce a new captain to our police department, Captain Hutton, for your promotion. Thank you. Want to stand, please? And I was remiss last week because I missed the opportunity to introduce the Yakima Police Department Employee of the Year. Would you stand, please?
Oh, wow.
Thank you for being here. All right. Tonight is a joint study session regarding homelessless coalition. I'd like to begin first on the agenda, excuse me, who are we going to have? Esther Masias from Yakima County is going to talk to us for a few minutes.
Hi. Hi, Commissioners, City Council. Thanks for having me. So this is just a brief overview of just a little bit of material I prepared to help your discussion today. I'm going to actually skip these first three slides. It's an overview of the homeless response system. I'm happy to answer questions about it, but I know we want to keep it brief. So I just kept those in there so that you had them as reference materials in case it's helpful for your discussion. This is the first slide that I think is probably important enough that we want to spend some time on, and it's the current funding in the homeless response system from Yakima County. This is a mix of state and local funds. And these are the categories that we fund: capital improvement, coordinated entry, which is a project for getting people connected with resources, housing resources out of homelessness, outreach, permanent supportive housing, rental assistance, sanctioned encampment, and shelter. You can see far and away our largest categories are rental assistance, sanctioned encampment, and shelter. Rental assistance, permanent supportive housing are both categories that the state really sets the funding amounts and provides the funding, excuse me, provides the funding for, but the remaining categories are a little bit more flexible. But this is really kind of an overview of what we're currently funding, again, with rental assistance, sanctioned encampment, and shelter being our primary areas. Rental assistance also, this category encompasses lots of different types of rental assistance: rapid rehousing, which is a one-month, first month and down payment intervention to assist people transitioning out of homelessness into housing; hen, housing and essential needs, which assists with housing for people who are unable to work, and you have to get recertified by DSHS in order to qualify for that; eviction prevention, which is a housing intervention to prevent people from becoming homeless; and then, I would say, I'm trying to think if we have any other. I think those are our primary rental assistance categories. Permanent supportive housing is also another one that sometimes falls under rental assistance, but it's its own set aside here. Permanent supportive housing is unique in that you have to qualify for assistance through having experienced homelessness and having a lifelong disability. So that's the only housing support program that we have that is, as the name implies, permanent. The rest are temporary supports. This is the local HMS beds. Again, just kind of compared to what we've got funded here, permanent supportive housing, rental assistance, sanctioned encampment, and shelter. You can see those same categories reflected here, with emergency shelter falling into two categories, entry-exit and night-by-night, which I'm happy to explain more of those questions, and then permanent supportive housing, or excuse me, permanent housing falling into a few categories, including permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. Of all of these, one of the things that I want to point out is each of these, each of these permanent housing types, I usually say like are intended to be utilized on an ongoing basis, permanent supportive housing especially, those 377, those beds don't turn over very frequently, but the 171, even though it's a permanent housing intervention, the beds turn over more frequently. Again, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but happy to answer questions about it. This, this is another slide that I thought was more important, the homeless response system outcomes. You know, the big number here, I think, that I always get drawn to is the 57,068 exits to permanent housing. This is since 2020, when the county took over the program and started the Human Services Department. We've housed almost 6,000 people out of homelessness into permanent housing, which is great. And this is the kind of success that we don't often see or feel on the street. I think I talk all the time about the homeless response system has a really significant PR issue. The places where we have succeeded become immediately invisible because those people return back into our community, go into housing. And the places where we haven't succeeded yet are the highest visibility. If you see 15 people on Natchez, that's what's going to stick with you, not the almost 6,000 people that we've housed. This is a quick slide, homeless population as a percentage of total population. You can see that Yakima County is trending well below the state average for homelessness or the state proportion for homelessness. And we also have had a bit of a downward trend in the last few years compared to upward trends that you were seeing at state and national levels. So that's positive. It's plateauing with a slight downward. And then this is a street-level complex case management and unsanctioned encampment response coordination. I can, again, answer more questions about this later, but I wanted to throw this slide up to talk a little bit about the street case management work that we have been doing. We recently hired a case manager in the last year, and this was a new position that Commissioner Curtis was really instrumental in developing and pushing forward. And the role is half-time embedded with DOC, helping with our recidivism efforts, which I'll talk about in a next slide, but half-time doing outreach and response. And part of that street outreach and response is really around case management for the most complex, high, high-needs individuals who are in street homelessness, who aren't getting that case management because they aren't engaged with the program, because they're in a level of street homelessness that is, they're not in shelter yet, they're not going to case managers yet, they're really still just out on the street, and they're often getting lost in the cracks between the systems with all of our different providers. And so Juan's role is really to go out and continue to engage and do street case management, even if they're still just in a tent. The other role is really responsiveness with our other partners. I've really kind of put together this spectrum to show the roles of code enforcement, case manager, and outreach and DCRs, and then law enforcement and DCRs. And really, our outreach and street response is best when we work together with these different entities, but we don't overlap, we don't try and do each other's jobs, because we end up wasting resources trying to do each other's jobs, and we're not as efficient. I, I can't have my case manager go out and try and do a law enforcement officer's job, because we don't have the legal authority to do that. We can't go out and do enforcement. And similarly, the law enforcement folks that we've talked to have expressed frustration when they have to go out, they're responding to calls, they show up, and there's not criminal activity happening, and their toolkit is a little bit limited, and they're not a case manager, and they don't have the time and the resources to devote to being a case manager. It has nothing to do with their desire to work with folks on the street, it has nothing to do with their compassion for the individuals they're working with. They just feel frustrated, and they feel like they're at a dead end when they show up and they go, I don't have the tools for this, this isn't a criminal issue. And so, working closely across these three sectors is, I think, a really key component of how we're going to effectively be able to address street and visible homelessness, which is one of the areas of homelessness which I think is seen and felt the most in the community. Like I said, there's the 15 people on Natchez, there's the 6,000 people we've housed, it's the 15 people on Natchez that people are seeing and feeling. And this is part of the strategy to respond there, and this is part of what Juan's role is now that we've added in the last year. Project Pause is the other half of that, the DOC work we've done. We have partnered with all of the providers that you see listed here and the Department of Corrections to do work inside the jail. This started as a project trying to strategize just logistics with the jail. How do we ensure that people aren't getting exited from the jail when their incarceration is over into the street if they don't have housing? And it ballooned into this huge project of figuring out, how do we get folks connected with services while they're incarcerated, use that time when they're incarcerated to make sure that we're lining them up with the supports they're going to need when they leave to try and reduce recidivism. And we've seen some pretty positive outcomes from this, which we're really encouraged by. And some of the things that we've also been able to do are things like signing people up and pre-filling their paperwork and pre-arranging their appointments with people who they're building relationships with inside of the jail, so that when they leave, it's not just, here's a brochure with a phone number with some people who might be able to help you with whatever problems you have. We're actually having an inmate-driven case conferencing model that builds around the needs that they identified during incarceration. And then we bring those resources to them, fill out their paperwork, get their documentation finished, get their, their appointments set, get their relationships built, so that when they leave, they actually know a person on the outside that can help them hopefully transition into a more stable outcome so that they don't end up back in jail. This is also something that we talked a little bit with the city's jail about, offering a similar program and a similar model to set up there. At the time, what we were told is because the city's length of stay in the jail is so short, it really, we usually have at least a month to work with folks before they exit to really get good work done. And what they were told, what we were told is like, you're already getting the folks that come through the city's systems, that would be a good fit for Project Pause. So we're always open to working more with the city jail if that's something that's identified, but so far in the conversations we've had preliminarily, it, it doesn't seem like it's necessary to duplicate this with the city. And then finally, this is just a project we've been working on this year with the intention of rolling it out this summer, and it's a downtown and First Street cleanup project. We're working with Day and Union Gospel Mission and People for People. People for People has a job placement program. It's part of their job training where they will pay for 300 hours of employment for people who are going through their job training so that they can get work experience under the guidance of the People for People job counselors. And Union Gospel Mission and Downtown Association of Yakima have both agreed to work with the county on setting up a placement program where we get two people from People for People, and we embed them six hours a day, three hours with Union Gospel Mission, three hours with Day, just to help with outreach and street cleanup work. And we're going to do that six hours a day, so it'll be 30 hours a week, with the intention of it being a 10-week project. And if it goes well as a pilot, then we're hoping to see if it's something we can continue doing as a year-round project. And I think that's my last slide. Oh, just charter updates. This one you guys can, again, reference just to have written down. This was something in part responding, responding to the needs that were identified previously by cities. And I think that's everything.
Thank you, and subsist. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. If you have any questions, let me know. Thanks.
We will during the evening. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask Captain Janice to come forward and speak a few minutes on the city's part, what we're doing.
Good evening, Yakima County Commissioners and City Council and city staff. I'm Captain Janice with the Yakima Police Department, and I have some data that we've been combing through over the last several days on its impact with the police department and the community in general. To give you an, an idea, we spend about 40 minutes on homeless calls in general, so about just under 10 minutes to respond. As you can imagine, they're not, they don't come in as the highest priority. They come in somewhere middle of the ballpark there, and then we spend about 30 minutes on scene, so about 40 minutes for each one of those. And we invest about $80 an hour per a police officer on any one of these calls. And so, most of them are at least two-person responses, so we have about $160 an hour we're investing into each one of these incidents. 2024, we had a little over 2,700 calls for service that are identified as homeless responses. And then we had 3,300 additional to that that were identified by officers. So what I mean by that is somebody in the community called either through 911 or another system, 2,700 of those we responded to, and then our officers found a little over 3,300 on their own in some capacity or another. So just over 5,000 that we responded to last year, which is an uptick from previous three years. And our total investment in 2024 is projected to be over $500,000.
Just a question.
Yes.
How many total calls do you do a year? You just told me 6,000. It's not five, it's six.
It's 6,000, correct. So total calls, total calls for service in the city of Yakima ranges between 56,000 and 60,000 a year, depending on how the year's going. So it's always high 50,000s.
It's almost a million dollars on homeless?
500,000, 506,000 is what the projection is last for 2024. Our two areas that were identified as stay-at-a-drug areas or SODAs were the Natchez Parkway area and the North First Street area. Both are geographically fairly large block areas in the north, in the stay-at-a-drug area on South Natchez. We had about 597 homeless-related contacts in 2024. Most of those were right where you could probably imagine. The heavier months, of course, are going to be the winter time, when they're congregating during the winter time, as opposed to other crimes, which generally uptick during the summertime. And then on the North First Street area, looks like the fall was the higher average months, and this is, of course, one year's worth of data, and we had 1,300 in that area, the stay-at-a-drug area on North First Street. Booking refusal is always an interesting topic. We went to a phone app program that collects more data as opposed to our previous models, which required a lot of officer input to get it right. They now have a phone app on all the officers' phones, and they track certain aspects of, of the refusal. So in the last 32 days, we had 36 refusals, and 17 of those were, were indicated to be homeless-related issues. Some of the things that we're doing to try and impact this population, we started meeting about three or four months ago with, through Safe Yakima Valley, and really was focused on the overdose epidemic and how we can better engage with service providers. And so, we grabbed all the service providers we could get to come to a meeting. We meet once a month, and one of the strategies we've implemented is putting the service providers in the car in somewhat of a co-responder-type model, mainly to give them the lens that the officers are seeing, because there was a disconnect in what the officers were seeing and what the service providers were seeing. And so, put them in the car with the officers. They mainly have been working with the Pro Act team. Sergeant Wisner's done a great job, comprehensive, has done over 10 ride-alongs, Triumph's done a handful, and some of the other service providers in town as well. It is my understanding, according to our meeting the other day, that there are some success stories with people taking services, but what they're finding out is it's the same as us. It's, we may not fix the problem the first response. It takes an inundation of responses to engage with that same person over time, and they're, what they're seeing is that some of the population is now participating in services. So we hope to keep that going. It's limited by our staffing levels. Our Pro Act team had to be sent back into the patrol division part-time to cover some staffing issues, but they're now back together. So the four-person team is, is working again this week. They're tied up on some other things, but as time allows, they're, they're putting the service providers in the car with them and taking them out into the impact areas, mainly the two SODAs. Patrol does a really good job of rapidly responding to homeless issues as time allows. The teams that probably do the best work is the overnight shifts, and that's really where they're looking for those that are congregating and camping in areas they're not supposed to, and providing the warnings, documenting it, doing the Yak backs on, on the computer and the phone, so that in the morning, the city can come through and pick up the garbage and trash. And they do that as best as they possibly can in light of other things going on in the city. So we're, that's our current methodology at this point, having, when Chief Boyle gets back, and now that we have three captains again, some of our strategies might change, but that's, that's what's going on in the city. It certainly opened any questions that commission and council may have. Yes, Mr. Glenn?
So, I know that there's a bunch of chronic homeless people that just there all the time. Do you have any idea how many homeless people are that are just always out there? Or, or is it a churn where we're constantly seeing new groups of people come in?
I don't have an exact answer to that, so I don't want to assume. Now, it would be my off-the-cup opinion that most of the people that are in certain areas of the community and representing the homeless populations are most likely ones that have been there for a while and resistant to services or going to other places.
I may offer a comment. Because when, Mayor Glenn, the number that was most recently given to me was 36, seemed to be, as of just the last couple of months, the, the repeat chronic offenders that are coming through or being denied into the jail for known issues for us not being able to house them. So I'm sure, as any community, there's probably an influx, but right now, that was kind of the latest number that, that I heard.
Just for Yakima? Is that what you're referring to, or to the whole county? 36 for the whole county?
36 for the whole county that were, once that were presenting most often with, with requests to house in the County Department of Corrections that we were not able to take.
Interesting.
Thank you, Captain.
Is this, is this number right, when you say there's 13,000 citations that have been issued?
I've asked for clarification on that number, and I haven't got it back. When I do get clarification, I will explain it further. I will, I'll message, I'll message the information to the city manager so that it's really clear on what the analyst put on paper. I don't fully understand it, but I had the same question, so I sent it back to the analyst and asked for some clarification.
We'd certainly be willing to forward that information to you as well for clarification. Thank you, Captain. Are there any other questions for the captain?
Captain, I have one question. Just curious on the, the types of incident calls, the suspicious circumstance, what, what does that entail? Like, what is different between suspicious circumstance versus like an unwanted guest? Is an unwanted guest like someone that literally has already been trespassed, or just, just the difference between those two unique call codes?
So suspicious circumstances is kind of the catch-all, and it doesn't fit in another basket. That's, that's how it's labeled, and call natures can change. They're rather fluid. So if it comes in as a suspicious circumstances, and it's actually an assault or property crime, then they can change it. Sometimes they don't. But often, suspicious circumstances are the ones that come in, and they just don't fit somewhere else. And so, we send an officer to those ones.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Then we will open up discussion for council and commissioners.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Council, I just want to first thank you on behalf of the county commissioners for hosting tonight's joint session. I want to say we're excited to be here, excited to have a robust conversation. Also, want to thank you for allowing county staff to kind of set the tone a little bit with our short presentation. And I just want the council to feel free to ask and engage with our county staff on any questions that arise out of today's discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Council, you know that our staff is here as well. So if you have any questions of either county or city staff, we can have them come up and answer. All right. Who would like to start?
Oh, yeah, I'll start, since I, you know, started this whole project. Really, in, in regards to all of the aspects, I have, I have like a set of probably 12 or 13 questions that I am looking for, especially, and a lot of them kind of go around the rental assistance program. And, I mean, it's about 50% of the funding that is currently in the homeless response funding. And, and so I have some questions of just trying to understand, and you might not have the answers, you might not have the answers, but I'm looking for some answers on this, is how many people is the 3.6, 3.7 million currently helping?
I want to call up Esther.
Yep. Esther, do you mind answering that question?
It seems like they're going to be related. And I think maybe at the outset, you could just remind us the, you, you did touch on it, which is that the funding amounts are set by the state for some of those specific, and especially for rental housing. So maybe you can speak to that.
Yes, yeah. So I, I, this is the closest number I have off the top of my head. I never like to estimate data because those are real numbers. So if you want me to follow up with any other real numbers, I'm happy to do that later. But the number that I would point to for our current, our current grant round, the rental assistance, that 3.6 million, that, as Commissioner McKinney mentioned, is a number that is awarded by the state and set by the state. So the funds are state funding, and the amount we allocate towards it is state funding. That is for the current, it's what's currently under contract. So it would be starting in June of 2024, going through July of 2026. For those rental assistance amounts you see there, that's two years' worth of funding. And I would point us back to this for now, because this is the numbers that I have prepared. And the exits to permanent housing, a large proportion of those are probably coming from rental assistance, because rapid rehousing is one of the largest components we have in rental assistance. And rapid rehousing is all about transitioning people out of homelessness into housing, and hen, which is our other large one. So these exits to permanent housing, which recently have been running over 1,000 a year, that's probably one of the large areas where we're seeing our rental assistance numbers represented. Our rental assistance, as I said, also includes prevention dollars now, so it's not all of the data. the data because we also have people who are being prevented from becoming homeless, and they're not exiting to permanent housing, they're remaining in housing, and I don't think they'd be in this exit data. So I would say just based off the data that we have, maybe 2,000 people a year as a guess, just based off what I've got, what I'm looking at right now, but...
Esther, if I may, I think it's important to note on those different programs, just briefly, like there is a timetable that folks are able to participate in rental assistance. When we talk about rental assistance, it's not a forever government subsidy, so I think it's important to clarify that.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. So for rapid rehousing, as I said, it's one month. You get your first month rent paid plus deposits, whatever you need to move in. HEN is time-limited based on your continued eligibility, and that's updated on a monthly basis. It has to be checked with DSHS every single month in order to qualify, and the qualifications include having a disability that has prevented you from working in the last 90 days. And then our eviction prevention is limited to, I believe, six months in total, and you can only use it once a year, and that is arrears only. So if you were to fall behind on rent, realistically, at this point, most people are not six months behind on rent. By the time they're six months behind on rent, they're evicted. So we're usually supporting people for less than six months. It's probably averaging closer to three. Permanent supportive housing is the only form of assistance that's permanent.
To answer the question directly, you would have to go back in time because the $3.6 million is the amount that's awarded to its pass-through dollars. And so it's for a time period. It would depend upon how many people who were, who applied, who were deemed to be eligible, and then, of course, that amount will vary depending upon the first and last that individual family is applying for. So it's possible that $3.6 million could not fully be spent. It's possible that it could. It's also possible that it could eventually help 1,000 people or 4,000 people. It depends. So we wouldn't be able to know until the grant process was closed. So we can look at what the previous grant program was and the amounts awarded during that cycle, and then we will tell definitively how many individual households were helped and at what dollar volume. So, but to your specific question, how many, yeah, how many for 3.6 right now? Unknown because we're in the middle of the grant cycle.
I want to intervene at this point and acknowledge that Councilman Leo Roy is online now. He joined us a while ago, and I want to ask both Councilman Roy and Councilman Mendizio what questions or comments you might have at this point.
I don't have any at this point. Commissioner Curtis actually directed that, my one question, over, so that was answered in this last section, so I don't have anything right now.
Thank you. Councilman Roy?
Yeah, no, I didn't have any questions. That first question that Matt answered was kind of what I had on top of my head at the time.
Okay.
I have one.
No, go ahead.
Excuse me, what are the requirements to enter the housing program?
So it depends on which one.
Do they have to be sober, or, I mean, I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So most of our programs are low barrier, which means they don't require sobriety. You can't be using in the program, for example, in a shelter. We don't have any shelters that allow drug use or even drug possession on-site, but we don't have usually sobriety requirements for participation in most of the programs that are funded. And the reason for that is you don't want for sobriety to be a barrier for someone to get housing. You do want to still encourage sobriety, but especially in programs like shelter. If you said, sorry, you have to be sober before you can come into shelter, what you'd end up with is a bunch of people who are in active addiction out on the street, which is not where you want them. You want them to be able to be in shelter so you can try and engage them with those advanced services. There are some programs that we do fund in the community that are sober living, and for those who do require sobriety, but it's not necessarily a requirement for every type of program.
I have a question. So just thinking about the process of somebody entering into any one of these, whether permanent supportive housing, HEN, rapid rehousing, any of those, how many people go into or transferred into, you know, or into housing outside of the system fail and then come back in again or end up on the street again? What's the percentage of that?
Again, I don't want to quote it because we actually do have that data. I wish I had known what your question, data questions would be in advance, I could have brought it. We do have data, though. We do see usually pretty good traction, especially on things like rapid rehousing. And a lot of that is because you're working with people who are hopefully housing-ready already. So when we look at our housing outcomes and you compare shelter housing outcomes to rapid rehousing outcomes, the rapid rehousing programs have way better housing outcomes than the shelter programs, and that's to be expected.
So my question kind of is, out of the 5,000 or 6,000 people a year that are moved out of the system into, excuse me, into housing, how many of those are ones that are repeat?
The majority of them stay in housing, yeah. So when they're moved into housing, we usually see a pretty high retention rate for that. And then unfortunately, if someone were to be evicted, you're probably not seeing them cycle back through into rapid rehousing immediately because once you have an eviction on your record, it's pretty hard to get back into housing. So rapid rehousing works with private landlords. It's not like a nonprofit-owned housing complex somewhere. They're helping people in homelessness find a unit, get set up, pay the first and last, move in, but after that, they're living in an apartment unit like any other renter, so...
I was kind of looking more at those that were not going to be asked for permanent rapid rehousing.
So for permanent supportive housing, it's pretty much 100% that stay in housing because that is a supportive program. Rapid rehousing is a pretty high retention rate. The HEN housing is similar to rapid rehousing, and then eviction prevention, they're usually staying in their housing as well. So they're pretty successful.
If you want to get back to us with what those percentages are, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, white council?
This issue that you bring up of, I call it churn, I had probably half a dozen people last year as a landlord that used government assistance to get housed and then refused to pay rent and with their free attorney services that are provided by the state, managed it and drew out the eviction process for several months so that then, just before the eviction actually took place, they went and moved out and went back and applied for assistance again. And that's a trend that I, all the years I've been in business, I've never seen it, but this last year I saw it a bunch. And I talked with neighborhood housing, and I also talked with the Yakima Housing Authority. I says, you guys, landlords will not work with you on these programs if you let these tenants pull this stunt. And they said that the federal, the way the rules are written up, they can't do anything about it. So what is actually happening is, as landlords see this develop, they are refusing to do business with any high-risk tenants because it's so expensive. It's a guaranteed money loser for them, and I think this is totally opposite of what we would like to accomplish with housing, but it's a very real issue. You can't just give them a little bit of money and let them suck in the landlord and then let the landlord eat thousands of dollars of losses to get going again. And it's a very real problem, and it's always down at the lower levels, you know, the high-risk tenants.
I think Commissioner, do you have a question?
Yeah, if I could, please. Well, just a follow-up to Councilmember Glenn's comments. You know, your comment kind of speaks to a larger issue, which is, you know, as we look at homelessness in Yakima County and the city of Yakima, unfortunately, there are a lot of things here that are out of our control. You know, for example, we've got the issue of the border now, you know, where we've seen so much, you know, drugs flow in here. The good news on that one is as we see that border tighten up, we're actually hearing from police that we're seeing the price of drugs go up. So it sounds like there's some progress being made there. But we also have the issue of the fact that we have lax drug laws in our state. We have rental policies such as you just described that makes renting more expensive. We also have green energy codes and other regulations that drive up the cost of our housing. So all of these things are contributing to the problem. So anyway, just wanted to point that out as we're looking at. I mean, I think it's good we're having this conversation because I don't think there's anybody of us that doesn't want to improve the situation, but we also need to recognize there are some circumstances that are tough for us to manage.
I was looking in the...
Excuse me. Commissioner McKinney?
Well, just to follow up to that and to your statement, sir, was that there are few areas where we are able to add our own layers of amendments onto the stipulations for receiving the funds. However, there have been some instances where we have been able to do that. One was hotel vouchers, where we ceased to fund hotel vouchers unless they were in the event of a domestic violence situation, and that was documented. We, of course, do not want to have any kind of a barrier for someone needing immediate rapid response for that situation. And that was in response to what this board felt was the hotel voucher program being utilized during outreach and was provided as an alternative to going into services that we would like to, hope that people would want to get to improve their situation. And another one was out of concern, what Commissioner Lindy just spoke to, is that we had concern that there were folks being brought into this community specifically to receive services. And so we amended our contracts, which disallow the use of providing services or busing in people from outside of the community so that you have to actually be from the community to receive the services. So it's not impossible, and there are ways to be strategic, and those are two changes that we made most recently in just the last contract preceding this one. Where we can, we are trying to amend the erroneous thinking from the state and federal government, as we see.
Quick, just can I ask one question?
In regards to that specifically, going back to rental assistance, is there flexibility on some of those regulations, much like what you're talking about on the hotel motel voucher program? And I say that because I'm going, you say it's no barrier on certain things. Okay, well, that's great, but I'm looking at, you know, how many calls for domestic violence has happened in our, in these rental assistance program, you know, that are receiving rental assistance? How many times has our cops showed up for domestic violence calls in those same areas? I don't know. That's a stat I would like to know. But also, like, out of those folks that are receiving rental assistance, like, what percentage needed drug or alcohol treatment or another sort of treatment? You know, if there's no bar for these funds, per se, then I'm going, how do we get folks to actually move through to those, you know? It just seems like there's just no regulation when it comes to the rental assistance aspect. And so I'm wondering is like, are there opportunities to actually change some of that? Or is it really just set at the front?
Is that an offer to assist us in going to the state legislature to amend? Because we, of course, have thought of these same things, but there are restrictions in what we are allowed to do. And for the most part, in these types of programs, it's either you offer it, you apply to offer it, or you do not. And that is a pretty significant community question to ask.
Well, and if I may just add to that, I mean, and Esther can, you know, spell this out for us, but yeah, Department of Commerce, which 72% of the dollars we use, which frankly is the rental assistance dollars, do have stipulations that you have to be low barrier, right? And so there are things that really are outside of our control, and I would also add this, you know, thought to the board to always consider like, okay, can the county just refuse those dollars? Yes, we can refuse those dollars, but that doesn't prevent another entity from coming in in our community and applying directly for those dollars. And so I've always struggled with, there is value add in ensuring that you have one entity, at least with a legislative authority being your commissioners, that can at least, to the best of our ability, pivot these programs, knowing that there are some things that we cannot change, but do the best we can in the guardrails that they're established. But Esther, I think it would be worth to clarify the low barrier for shelters and then just like even testing requirements for rental assistance. Like, are those things that we can change in our contracts?
Yeah, so low barrier for shelter, we do need to have, I believe, we could explore whether there was, it would be sufficient to have like one low-barrier shelter and not. But again, for shelter, you really want them to be low barrier because you don't want shelters to turn people away on the basis of being an active substance use disorder. I understand what you're saying about making sure that there's accountability baked into some of these programs, but at the same time, if you don't have a site for those folks to go, the outcome is you're going to have people in active addiction on the street, which you also don't want, you know, so it's...
I mean, I already do, so...
Right, right, but you will have, you know, if you're saying that people can't get into shelter or housing until they've also overcome their addiction, you're forcing them out of programs and you're forcing the most high-needs individuals, potentially the most disruptive individuals, back out onto the street.
I think I'm not trying to go as extreme as that. That's not what I'm necessarily, I'm not saying, let's raise the bar to an extreme level, which is what you're saying. What I'm trying to say is like, is there any sort of accountability to the dollars that we are giving to people? Because at the end of the day, the taxpayers, I mean, there's consequences to actions that people take inside the community. You do something on the street, you do this, there's laws for a reason. And if there, if there is no way for us to actually hold that money necessarily accountable to some sort of laws and aspects, and this is kind of a get-out-of-jail-free card for a lot of these folks, and it, you know, it's a frustration because, I mean, I'm asking the other question is how much goes towards landlords versus overhead? How much money actually of the rental assistance, the 3-point, I mean, I guess we haven't spent that yet, but the last rental assistance money, how much of that went towards actually paying the landlords and not paying an administrator or people to actually maintain this? And I don't know if that's captain as well, I don't know.
It is, yeah. The majority goes to rent, to landlords, yeah. That's why that's our largest category.
Is it like 6%, 10%?
We have a 6% admin cap, and then we have a operations cap, which is just for the case management staff. It has to be directly attributable to the rental assistance, so it can't be overhead, it can't be executive salaries, whatever. It's the staff that are actually administering rental assistance. I can't remember what the cap is for that, but I would say comfortably, I could say off the top of my head, probably at least 60% is going directly to rent, but probably more. And actually, every year, our providers voluntarily, we've, this isn't mandatory, but we've seen it, providers voluntarily move funds out of their operations into rent assistance. We see that actually happen quite frequently, where people will give up their dollars that they could have used for staffing and they move it to rent instead.
I'll go after him.
Yeah, if I could, thank you, Mayor. If I could speak just a little bit to the accountability, this is where I, when I was kind of going back to the lax drug laws, you know, as I've spoken to our prosecutors, you might remember that a couple of years ago, we had technically made drug possession legal in this state due to the rules they had, and it's been tightened up a little bit. But speaking to our prosecutors, it really, you know, it's a gross misdemeanor right now. It really, to be effective, needs to be at least a lower-level felony. And so it seems to me that although that's going to be an uphill battle, getting that changed from our legislature, that's a conversation I'm willing to have, if you're willing to join in that. On the side of progress, I did want to mention one thing. There's been some conversation about permanent supportive housing, you know, that there's a need for more of that. One thing that we've been, as county commissioners, that we've been pushing as one of our legislative priorities this year is a change to the way we can use our mental health sales tax because there's a provision in there that has stated that counties and cities can use this money for remodeling or revamping current facilities. We've made the argument, unfortunately Senator King actually put a bill forward this year for us to say, well, why can't you use that to build new facilities as well? Because, as you know, sometimes it's cheaper to build a new facility than repair an old one. The good news on that one is that that passed the Senate this year, 49 to nothing, and it's passed the House and it's waiting on the governor's desk. That would give us, yeah, so that would give us the ability to do more with the mental health sales tax in that regard, I feel.
Thank you. We have...
One of the things is I've looked, I looked up, there's 100,000 people in Yakima, and according to the US Census, half of them are homeowners, live in their own home, and then the other half are renters. But then, when I first got on the council, they brought out the fact that 50% of the renters are paying at least 50% of their income. So we've basically got one-fourth of the city of Yakima that's having a really hard time getting housed, and I think a lot of those efforts go that way. But the thing that everybody focuses on and that we're here for tonight is to talk about those people that are out here on the streets. And if we really believe in having a civilized society, you can't let people live on the streets, do drugs on the streets, do theft and all other kinds of crimes on the street with impunity. And that's kind of what's happening right now with the homeless people that are out there. And also along with that, I've been arguing this for several months, and I think that our police have done a wonderful job of decreasing that number. They're way down from what they were, but that's where the real focus is as far as homelessness. We've got, they, they're a detriment to business, they're a detriment to property owners, they're a detriment to tourism. There's nothing good about having homeless people on the street, and it's illegal for them to be on the street. So we need to be a little bit more hard-nosed about saying, yes, I know you have your rights, but you don't get to camp out on the street and you don't get to defecate on the streets and do whatever you want. It doesn't make me happy to see people having sexual intercourse just outside my property or doing drugs out in the open. And that's what's been happening, and that's really the thing that we need to focus on. The housing issue is a lot bigger than just the people who... The housing issue is a lot bigger than just the people who are out on the streets homeless.
Yeah. Councilman Herrera.
I think I'm gonna go back real quick to something Commissioner McKinney mentioned, the policy that only local residents are, have the, can get services from the county. Can we touch that a little bit, because I know that's very important, of people talking about like, you know, people are busing and dumping people here in the, in our communities, which is important as well. I would like just to know, like, maybe a brief information, like, when it started, or like, the process, what if a certain homeless person doesn't have identification, like, any important information?
I'd validate that, yeah.
Good for us, for the pub, for the public as well.
So, enforcement is always going to be at the, it will be the requirement of the, the third party that, that utilizes and receives the funding. And so, because it's written in the contract, it's, it's similar to any other requirement we place in the contract, they are signing and testing that they will follow those rules. If we find information and reason to believe that they have not followed the letter of the contract, we can investigate and audit, and we can determine if we want to cease funding. So, it, it's, it's going to be, we're not proactively looking to search for people who are not abiding by the contract, it is just like code enforcement, which you have as well. If we have a complaint and a reason to investigate, we will do so.
You're talking about service providers?
Correct.
So, we have, I think your point in time count, it was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was something like a fourth of the point in time count was folks that were not from our county?
Yeah, and we've got a, our 2025 point in time count, Commissioner Lindy, if you don't mind grabbing the, the blue sheet there, the fact sheet. So, when you, when we do our survey to our unhoused population, 72% of the population says that they're from Yakima County, that is their place of origin. However, when you look at the other categories, 12% say they're from other counties, 8% said they came from outside of Washington, and 7% decided not to report. So, that is a fair statement, Councilmember Brown, that a fourth of our population is not from Yakima County when we surveyed them.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, because I'm, they're, they're here for some reason, and they're obviously getting some services to be able to be here. They're, they're not just, you know, they're, they're getting something out in the community if 28% of them are continuously being here.
Yeah, well, your points, Madam Mayor, to Commissioner McKinney's point, that was a very lively conversation your commissioners have been very much engaged with, so that is why we instructed the Human Services Department to do a contract amendment to all of our service provider contracts, it has a clause in there that states if you are actively recruiting out of county residents, that we, we're gonna know, and we're going to terminate contracts. And so, that was something this board very much wanted to stay on top of. Esther, if you don't mind, I think it's important to just, to Councilmember Herrera's a question about like, if someone doesn't have an ID, can they use shelter, and what does that look like?
Yeah, so, shelter, again, this is a part of the low barrier component, you can't turn people away for lack of identification, that's a state requirement, and it's also a best practice, because a lot of people experiencing homelessness don't have documentation of any kind, whether or not they were born and raised down the street from this building right here, it's just tough to get IDs, they cost money, you need other paperwork to validate the ID that you need, and so, we don't check documentation at our shelter, well, we don't, the providers that we fund don't make it a practice to check documentation, but we do have, to Commissioner McKinney's point, the language in there that empowers us, if we were to discover a provider busing folks in, pulling folks in from elsewhere to offer services, to respond within the context of our contracts. And we have a standing offer to anybody in the community, and I'll make that offer to the city council right here and now, if you ever see a busload of people unload, stop that bus and give us a call, we'll be there within 30 minutes from anywhere in the county. We want to shake the bus driver's hand, ask them where they came from and who sent those people. It's never happened yet that we've got that call, that anyone's actually seen that bus, but, you know, we're interested in knowing if that's the case, so if you ever have a valid reason to believe it, yeah.
Didn't we get a bus from Texas last year or something?
We have had that, I know that, the problem is, it's not our service providers bringing them in. There has been some history of that, I know that, but hopefully it's coming to an end, but providers in other communities bringing them in, or law enforcement from other communities bringing them into Yakima, and that's actually been happening, so we have no control over that. So, then what do the service providers do when they come? And they're dropped off.
So, the, the 12%, though, that's, you're saying it's coming from other counties, or wherever they're coming from, outside of Washington even, so 20% with those two, like, why are they staying here if they cannot receive services from any providers?
Well, it's always a mixed reaction, you know, I do the point in time count every year, so I do these surveys and I collect the information, and so, I've heard a lot of stories, oftentimes it's, yeah, I had a girlfriend, and her aunt lived out here, so we came out here because the aunt said she was gonna give me a job, but then she didn't, and fell apart, and now I'm at Camp Hope, or whatever it is. I mean, there's lots of reasons that people migrate.
No, but you just said that they can't receive services, so if they're at Camp Hope, that is receiving some of the services.
Do you want to clarify, Esther?
Sure, yeah, so, we have language in our contracts that empowers the county to respond if we find that somebody is importing people in order to give them services, but as I said, we don't, none of our providers require identification in order to come in, and low barrier requires that you don't. So, the clause in our contracts just empowers the county to respond if we were to identify that a provider was intentionally bringing people in in order to give them services, but I don't expect that any of our providers are actually, actively turning people away on the basis of where they've come from, and our, yeah, Commissioner, I don't...
While I would have enjoyed having that ability, it is against state law, because you cannot compel people to provide proof of citizenship. So, this was the very next best way, which was to say, though, that we can prohibit funding if you are actively bringing people into the community to provide them services, that they would not have been here otherwise to receive.
But what if they, what if they say, though?
I'm gonna ask a question.
All right.
I started that conversation, thank you. My concern is that people are not being solicited by our providers, but are coming anyway at somebody else's hand, you know, whether it's on their own for a boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever, or whether it's being brought here by other law enforcement agencies, or whether it's being shipped from people that run services in another community, and, and then being dropped off here in Yakima because they don't want to provide services anymore. And, and, you know, and that is happening, so how do we curtail that? I'm, I'm just asking, any ideas we have about that?
I think, to Councilmember Brown's point, you know, why, why are they here? Well, number one, it's Washington. So, we do have lax laws, we also enjoy a lot more sunshine than most places, we have the happy medium of having services that they're seeking, we also have an extensive drug trade. Drugs are free, easy, and cheap, and we have a lot of beautiful areas where they can camp illegally, and make it very difficult for us to get to them, and clean them out. So, I'm, I, I've traveled some, I don't see very many homeless people in downtown Phoenix in the summer. I haven't seen a lot of homeless people, you know, on cold, cold streets in the Midwest in the middle of winter. So, I think that they're, to some point, it's because of our climate and our proximity and location to Seattle, and the fact that we live in a state that does not allow law enforcement to protect citizens in the way that I think people in our community wish that they were allowed to. I really, I think that's probably where the crux of the conversation probably wanted to go, which was to your point, Councilmember Glenn, to discuss the 36-ish, you know, to however many people who are the constant habitual offenders who are violating the laws, but they are known to the criminal justice system to have so many addiction issues, or known physical issues, ailments, medical issues, or mental health issues, that when we know that, we being the Department of Corrections, law enforcement, they all know them by first name, they, they do, we, they know, they know everything about them, I've been on ride-alongs, and the rapport that, that our law enforcement has built with them is actually extraordinary. The temperament that our law enforcement in this community has is second to none. But, when we know that these conditions exist, that jail is unfortunately the last place that we can have them, at least from a budgetary standpoint, because your $500,006 that you spent in one year is a single deductible for a death in the jail. And those people are, have the highest likelihood of ending up dying, because they have such significant known issues, that trying to keep them alive despite some choices they've made, or inabilities, or mental health or physical ailments, that's what this is, this is money, it's a budget, and at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is to create a new jail to be able to better provide services for those people who have those extraordinary circumstances that must be dealt with if we're going to take them off the street. And it is certainly not a lack of compassion for those people, and it's not a lack of compassion for the people who are the taxpayers who deserve to live in a civilized area where we know that those things that you described don't happen every day with, in the presence of children, which is disgusting, it's immoral, and that's where we're at. So, we have to have a place to put them, and that's what we're trying to build, is a jail, and hopefully have providers who are gonna provide the kind of services to these people, and have designated crisis responders that we fully fund at this point, and legislation that's going to allow, allow those designated crisis responders to be able to involuntarily commit those people to get the services that they need, so they are not on your doorsteps downtown, that's the idea.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yeah, two thoughts there, and one is just to piggyback on Commissioner McKinney's last comment. We actually were pushing legislation last year to change the involuntary treatment act, so that if somebody, like you know, you find that has died due to an overdose, and we bring them back to life, right now, you can't force them in involuntary treatment. We wanted to change that law, and it unfortunately didn't get as far as we wanted to, but we can bring it back next year. The other, the other point I wanted to bring up is, you know, Commissioner McKinney referenced Washington State and the laws here, one of the, one of the slides that Esther put up there was talking about rate of homelessness, and it compared, you saw three graphs there, you saw Yakima County, you saw Washington State, and you saw the United States, and, you know, we can compare, you know, you can compare us to the United States, and we, we look higher than average, but if you look at that graph and compare us to Washington State as a whole, we're below average. Now, that doesn't mean we really want to celebrate where we're at, you know, that's not why I'm bringing the point up, but it's like, we're living under a different set of rules due to the fact that we live in Washington State, and there are rules that tend to make it homelessness more attractive, or easier.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about mental health, drug addiction, and I was going through the budget here, if that's a pertinent issue, how come only 4% of the budget is spent on outreach for services?
So, as we described, the money that's allocated to each of those items are set by the state.
Okay.
So, they allocate more for rental assistance.
Commissioner Curtis mentioned kind of pivoting, is there any way to change those percentages, or?
So, on outreach, absolutely, we can go all in on outreach, there is no minimum requirement on outreach, rental assistance, the housing essential need, the hand federal housing assistance program dollars, absolutely, we have no control, those dollars have to be spent. Frankly, the county gotten some, Commerce had told us, we need to spend more on permanent supportive housing, so obviously, that's why we've been doing that. I think we need to acknowledge that, you know, we all know who are, are complex chronic homelessness individuals are in our community, we know they have, a lot of them, a lot of our folks have a mental health component, a substance use component, and we made a lot of big decisions to utilize our mental health sales tax dollars in order to add additional services alongside all those dollars you saw there, to offer mental health and behavioral health services. And frankly, that, the, our service providers who are utilizing and standing up those programs are the first of its kind in, in our state, so we should be proud that we're, you know, we're pivoting, we're trying different things, because the reality is, is when you have 53% of our unhoused population that's chronically homeless, meaning they've been homeless over a year, some of our folks more than seven years, what we're doing isn't working, and we've got to try something different.
How many of those would you estimate are, have mental health or drug addiction?
Again, this is a, Madam Mayor, if you look at the 2025 point in time, and we always like to clarify, this is a point in time survey, so this isn't capturing all of the unhoused population in our county, someone has to say, yes, I want to take a survey, but when we ask them, what is the five most commonly reported disabilities, where 35% of our population said mental health, 27% synchronic substance use disorder, 21% a chronic health condition, and then a physical, 19% said a permanent physical condition. So, overall, we, and, and this is a trend that we've, we've seen over the last three years, mental health and behavioral health and that complexity is one of the big reasons people are stating of why they're not able to access the, the programs successfully to get them out, out of a state of homelessness, it takes time.
Well, one question I have, going back to the 20% number on outside of Washington, so if, if folks, i- is there, is there no way, I understand the busing and all of that aspect, but I'm, I'm wondering is, if they are, if I go into UGM or Camp Hope and I say, hey, I'm not from here, and they still, and I'm not gonna say, let's not say UGM, but let's say Camp Hope, I'm not from here, is there a way for us to, oh, well, you just said you're not from here, you can't receive services. I mean, is there a way to bake something like that into a contract? I mean, they're self-admitting this, this issue, and, and I say that because I'm, I'm going, 20% of the people, I mean, more than that, or 7% that didn't respond, but at least 20%, well, that could be a lot of the same chronically homeless folks that are, you know, that are not responding, that are coming from other communities, that are here, and I'm going, if they show up, well, I don't have an ID, but I'm not from here, I'm from Spokane, they obviously are telling us they're not from here. So, what can we do with that data to actually make sure that our money that we're spending as taxpayers are putting it back towards the people that live and breathe and sleep in our community that are Yakima, Yakima people? And, and I think that would discourage the 20% of people that are like, yes, it's nice and sunshining in Yakima, absolutely, but they are holding this to, to their citizens, not outside of Yakima.
I think they'll still be here, as long as there's services that they're going to be able to try to find, but that's not just services that come from a sanctioned encampment. Again, it comes down to the lifestyle and the livelihood that they can have, living in Yakima County with the, the addiction issues that they have, and being able to sleep in areas where they're off the grid. And they simply come in, and there's panhandling, and they trade internally when they come, they'll trade with people who are in encampments, and then those people will leave and come back, we know that's how needle exchanges are done. One person goes and does the needle exchanges, somebody else goes to the grocery store, you know, these are communities that they've created in these spaces, and I think one aspect we haven't talked about too, that we've tried to track, attack this with, is making it as uncomfortable as possible to be illegally camping in Yakima County. Now, downtown, it's a little bit different for you, but what we've been doing is going to all of our spaces, and we've created that, and spearheaded that robust cleanup effort, and we changed our county ordinances that we could go in and clean up abandoned encampments, and then we moved to active encampments. And how we were able to do that was to leverage environmental health dollars, because they're ruining the environment that we care very much about, and spend hundreds of millions of dollars a year to restore fish habitat, and yet, you know, we want to let people put needles in it. And then we utilize public health, because the chronic issues, and we know this from our service in the Health Board, that there is a significant issue with sexually transmitted diseases and hepatitis in the homeless population, obviously, that is also not, but we're having to be proactive, us, and I mean we, because this is a community, and we have the privilege of serving with you, Madam Chairman, on the Health Board, we're trying to find different ways to go around a system that is set up for communities like ours to perpetuate a problem, and we're trying to stop perpetuating a problem.
Yeah, I guess my point though is, I'm just trying to, I know this is my question, though, and I'm still trying to get it answered. So, my question is still, is, is there no way for us on these contracts to say, if they self-report as not being from our community, for us to say, we cannot provide you service at any of these aspects? And I'm not saying ID verification, I'm not saying any of that, but if I come in and say, I'm from Spokane?
I would be happy to take that back to a corporate counsel, but I will say that we had a robust conversation about this, because I wanted to do exactly what you're describing, which is so that nobody, if you don't pay taxes in Yakima County, you don't get services. However, because of the laws that constrain us, it was the legal opinion that we were not able to do that, and the solution and compromise we had was the one we described.
We have a question over here, and before we do that, actually, Councilman Herrera, do you have anything else to ask or say at this point? Councilman DCO, anything you'd like to ask or say at this point?
Right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Roy, anything you would like to ask or say at this point?
Nope, I'm good, thank you, info's been really good.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Councilman Glenn?
Yeah. One of the things that kind of intrigues me, just from what I've been watching, you go down First Street, you know where the Union Gospel Mission is, because you see the homeless people out there, they're kind of a homeless magnet, and that kind of leads to the issue that you addressed a little bit, we want to make it uncomfortable for them, we want to make it more comfortable for them to go and seek help somewhere than to stay on the streets, we want to make it uncomfortable to be on the streets. We want to make it uncomfortable to be on the streets. So when we go out and give away free iPads and free cell phones, and there's a church that comes every week and gives away food, and then I have to spend the next day cleaning up the garbage, it's all very nice, but the reality is, if we're not helping these people in some way to get out of the situation that they're in, are we really helping them? And is there a way that we can restrict that? You know, I mean, what's the value of giving away free iPhones and free iPads when you know that they're just going to be barter items for more drugs or whatever, you know, I mean?
I appreciate, I'll answer for you, Esther, because there isn't a way that we can create a county ordinance that prohibits an individual from gifting something, I mean, it's...
It's actually the state that does that.
Yeah, I would love to be able to have the state not do that, but they get, there is nothing that comes to mind that would allow a city or a county to prevent the state or federal government from giving directly services to someone who is in our jurisdiction.
That leads to the idea that, what if we made them buy a business license to sit on the corner and beg? No, that's really something that we don't want them doing.
Well, they won't buy it, and they'll do it anyway, and then you'll cite them, and maybe that's how you ended up with 13,000 citations that you're not sure where those came from, but...
Commissioner Curtis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I think I want to chime in a little bit to, first, Councilmember Brown's question about what do we do with this out-of-county population that shows up on our doorsteps? And first, I want to acknowledge that our service providers, they do exceptional work, they truly do. When given, when they're able to engage with someone who wants to utilize services, who gives them the time of day to help them get out of homelessness with a hand up, not a handout, it works extremely well. You talk to any service provider, the first thing they will tell you is, family is the core of the most success. Our service providers, if it's someone from out of county, we offer bus tickets. They try to connect these individuals to whatever family they have, and frankly, it was in 2023, we spent, it was 258 bus tickets that county taxpayers paid for to send folks to families outside of the county. So it works when it's utilized. I think, Councilmember Glenn, your question on First Street, and this is just my opinion as a commissioner who's been on now three years, I would say, our local jurisdictions, the city and the county included, we've been paralyzed. You know, we've been paralyzed by our legal departments, we've been paralyzed by Supreme Court, the Grants Pass decision, we've been paralyzed in this community, and thus, we now are at a state where the visible homelessness is what the community looks at as its homeless response system, and that's not the truth. And, you know, we attempted to show tonight that there are positive outcomes. When the population engages with services, and our service providers are able to do the things that they do exceptionally well, it works beautifully. But we're at a point where we have to do something that requires, frankly, it requires a response outside of the homeless response system. I'm not writing off that the homeless response system doesn't need to engage in the populations that's refusing to engage in the services, but we're at that point, and I would contribute it to us being paralyzed.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Curtis mentioned the Grants Pass decision, and actually, the Grants Pass decision was actually a ray of light for us, a ray of hope, because it actually is giving discretion back to the local governments, and give us some authority there. I will tell you that the legislature this year was actually trying to create a bill to circumvent or push back against Grants Pass, we pushed back, and fortunately, that bill died, but, I mean...
I want to make a comment at this point too, recognizing the effectiveness of having our law enforcement officers and service providers working together, because that circumvents the having to go through a system to a certain degree, because our officers will have service providers there who can on the spot connect them to services, which I think is, I want to compliment our project team for that.
It's not necessarily a question, but I'm wondering if there, as we're talking about funding for the future, is looking at, so right now, I mean, our business community is pretty much, I mean, that's who I hear from the most, from the, you know, feces on their front porch to the needles in the back, to the garbage, the, whatever it is.
Broken windows.
The broken windows, I mean, it's constant, and there's nothing for them. There's no help for cleanup, there's no help for, it's private property, see what I'm saying? Sure, the sidewalk got cleaned by Clean Cities or the county or someone is doing this work, okay, but the private property owner is still responsible for this person who's just, you know, completely destroyed their back patio or done all of this damage, and there is no money from the county, from the state, from the city, from anyone, to help these business owners who are experiencing an act of vandalism on the constant in their community. And I don't know how to solve that for them necessarily, but I'm wondering from a funding standpoint, is there a way to create a program of some sort of revitalization for some, that these businesses can tap into to help, you know, like I had a business owner who had literally pounds of feces on their back, like pounds of it out there. They were gone for two weeks, and came back, and it was ransacked. They called Clean Cities, Clean Cities could not come because it was on private property, and they said, well, you're going to have to go hire someone to go, so now they're now paying to have someone clean all of this literal crap off of their area, and, you know, and that lady was, she was able to do it, she made it happen, but she was like, this is nuts, like, why, the businesses just have to keep forking this out? I don't blame businesses for not wanting to be in Washington State. I don't blame them at all, this is, yeah, I mean, this is a very tough adamant, and I guess from the, like, the citizens of Yakima, I'm going, when do the business owners and the people who live here get their rights back to be able to pursue life, liberty, be able to actually make a business, raise their kids, and not have acts of vandalism completely tearing apart their dream? And I don't know how, I don't know how we can structure a program that way, but I think that is the biggest crux of people who, when you talk about a bad PR situation when it comes to the homeless response system, well, it's because there's all this money going out to try to solve this problem, and our businesses and our people that are experiencing have no help, and that is the point.
But it's not solving the problem, because the only way, there's no consequences for those people, and I, we hear it too, your business owner or your property owner has something of value and therefore is responsible and has something to lose, and so the city would come in and maybe even write them a citation or threaten to take their business license away because they had a poor public health standard, and they're in eatery, and they're required to pass their inspection from the Health Department, and so what are they going to do? They're going to have to pay for it, and the individuals that did that, even if they're known, are so well-known to be so medically and mentally out of it, that they don't have the same consequences that those people in the community who are law-abiding citizens do. There are no consequences, which is why I continue to believe that the best thing we can do is find a way to restore the ability to enforce consequences on those people. They cannot be on our streets anymore, and right now, the jail is not an option, so we have to have a place where we can actually give them a consequence and put them there. And a consequence can, by the way, lead to redemption and healing and health, and that's what we continue to want for people. But we have to be able to have a consequence, and right there, I acknowledge, there is no consequence for the people that you've described and that you described. We are just cleaning up.
I mean, I guess that's my point though, is like, so, I mean, I've brought this up for years of, we needed this place, we need a place, we need this thing, whatever this thing is, we need this, and it's, now I'm four years in, we're not anywhere closer than we were four years ago to having this place, this mythical, magical place.
It's not mythical, it's a $250 million jail that obviously, we don't have the money to go spend.
But you're still talking liability, you're still talking all of these aspects, and I'm, I guess for me is I'm going, so is that 20 years away for these business owners? Is that 15 years away? Is that 100 years away? I'm going, I guess, that's not a, that's not a solution that is attainable, so we have to...
It is attainable, but we're incremental, so a jail is a huge capital project, and to be able to build that with no state or federal funding is huge, which is why we've been advocating through the legislative sessions to have that, but that's not the only thing we're advocating for. Incrementally, we're also advocating for providers to come in to actually offer the kind of services that are also going to be available that we would, it's not all going to be in the jail, but we need a jail, and we need the ability to be able to put these people to receive the type of medical care that they need, the kind of mental health care they need. Those facilities exist in other parts of the state, but gaining access to them is very difficult, so we're trying to get those people to also come in, and I think it should be a private endeavor, by the way, because I really do not want the government, the county, or any government to come in and start building mental health facilities and detox centers. I think they should be private enterprises, because that is a way they're going to actually function and profit, but, because I also don't think the government should only take over things that we know are going to be losses, because that's why we're in the problem.
With the liability though, that you currently have in the jail system, how does that solve the problem? And I say that...
The hardest part right now is that the jail cannot keep them for space and other reasons.
So why can this magical building that you're, so I'm asking, because I'm going, what makes that different than the jail?
So if you've been through the jail, the jail is very old, is built in 1984, it's a long, like an old hospital, linear hallways, and you have people in pods, and new jails are built in a way that allow for people to be in individual cells, and yet they're also all viewable, because the law, there are very restrictive laws when people are in the care of Department of Corrections, and so you have to have eyes on them physically to check on them, 29 minutes if they've had a significant issue that requires you to check on them more often, and so a new jail by design is, requires less FTEs, because a huge cost is labor, obviously, and then it allows us to not move them around or have them interact with each other as much, because as you can imagine, the more they interact with our corrections officers, or the more they are able to interact physically with each other, that is when we start having violence and deaths. And then additionally, the medical facilities inside of the jail do not, it's not conducive to be able to get a lot of people in who need those medical or addiction or treatment, I mean, they've all got all sorts of things, and we have to be able to treat those. So by designing a facility that allows fewer people and fewer interactions physically with other people, it's safer, and that's the idea.
Let me, I'm going to defer to something, I'll get right to you, Mr. Glenn. I want to ask a question, because one of the things you brought up, Deputy Mayor Brown, is how can the businesses be helped? And right now, it doesn't seem like there's any answer to that, but one of the questions I have is, if a landlord is involved in any part of the rental coverage program that you have, is there any compensation to landlords for damages?
There is, Esther, do you want to answer that, or I can?
You can go first.
Yeah, no, there's absolutely assistance, and Councilmember Glenn can kind of elaborate, because I think you've participated in this assistance. Anytime someone files anything, any document through the county, there's a certain percentage surcharge that goes back to the state to provide assistance for landlords when they're dealing with damages done to their units and whatnot, but it's, frankly, I don't think it's a successful model. It takes forever for those claims to go through, the amount of work that a landlord has to do just to get that rebate, I mean, it's immense, so, Councilmember Glenn, you've talked about that a lot.
Yeah, it's a cosmetic remedy, it doesn't really, practically, it's non-existent because of all the limitations to it, I mean, it's basically, that's ineffective. The thing that intrigues me though, you explained what we need to put these people in jail, and yet, these people have exactly the same problems, and we're saying, it's okay to put them back on the street with all those issues and all those problems, and let families who don't know anything about it suffer the consequences. That's what bothers me the most, is we let these people who aren't safe to be in society to go be in society, and we're just waiting for them to die, basically, the way it's going right now. And the other comment I'd like to make, and I brought it up lots of times, but, there was a court case a couple of years ago where the courts ordered the state of Washington to take custody of people who are drug addicted, mental problems and so on, and provide the services and take it off of the counties and the cities' hands, and they've paid hundreds of millions of dollars in penalties for their failure to perform on that court order, but that is really the solution that would really help us more than anything, if the state would honor their commitment to do what the court said and provide those facilities, then we'd have a place we could send these people.
Maybe pay for public defenders too, that way.
Yep, there's a lot of things the state could do, trust me. Councilmember Berg?
Commissioner McKinney, you mentioned privately funding mental health facilities, is that right? Do you know of any counties that do that around the state?
Yeah, I mean, there's counties where there are facilities that are privately owned.
I'd like to research if, do you...
Yeah, absolutely, I just visited one over, was I in Tacoma? I don't know where I was, but I went there, and I would be very happy to connect you with them directly so that you can go look at it, and it is, all of the people who were there were people who were exactly the ones that we're describing, who would traditionally be in a business doorstep or causing, you know, the kind of issues that we're talking about, and who were afflicted with the kind of issues that we're talking about, but they received 24-hour care for all of their mental addiction, physical ailments, because of course, with living chronically on the street, there are a lot of physical issues and ailments that go on as well. And just to follow up, just really quickly about, when we talk about though, I obviously agree with you, and what you said is that it's so sad that they're so bad that we actually, I wouldn't say it's better for them on the street, but that's the judgment, right? The perception is that we can't put them here, so this is where they're going to go. The reality of the decision is that because, as I described, it's a $500,000 right out of the door deductible, the jail is at least a place that we can put those people who are causing violent offenses in our community outside of these people, and we cannot lose the jail. We have to keep the jail open, and if we get to a situation where we have people coming in and they are passing away under our care because of these known issues, we run the risk of having the jail have to close hard stop, and so that is the decision here, do we keep away the ones that pose the greatest risk to having that happen, so that we can continue to take all the violent offenders who are committing heinous acts also against the community? That is the juggling here, and for me, I got to keep the jail open. I have to have a place where someone who is violently abusing their wife, or their children, or raping children, or murdering people, those people I have to hold in that jail, and I cannot have the jail closed.
Commissioner Curtis?
Yeah, I'll just chime in really quick on the mental health, you know, Councilmember Berg, I'm going to bring us to reality. Anytime we talk about expanding mental health capacity, medical detox, 23-hour centers, the harsh reality is these are long-term solutions. These don't happen overnight, you have to find the funding source, you have to find the building, then you have to find the provider, and then that provider has to get licensed through the state, and so I've accepted that any of those are long-term solutions that can take two to three years to build out. The other thing I wanted to just really hype on is the business community, they have been neglected in our community, but I think there are items on the table that can be addressed. So one is obviously, Esther kind of alluded to, that we're trying to develop a downtown cleanup crew in addition to the Clean City Crew, that really is just having a physical presence of a constant litter cleanup. The other thing, none of our funding sources from the state Department of Commerce will allow us to do this, but why can't we stand up a program where our businesses can apply and get rebated or a rebate for putting in a fence, physically hardening their spaces, installing lights in their alleyways, I mean, things that actually deter from the problem occurring. And the third and final one, and again, this is low-hanging fruit, is I think our business community is respectful of our law enforcement, so when they have these issues, they're not calling 911. We need another number or another avenue for these business leaders to call to report their incident and get that situation taken care of. So I think there are solutions on the table, it's just unfortunately, with the funding source that we get from the state, we're not going to be able to tap into those dollars for physical deterrence.
Can you use mental health dollars to remodel, help businesses? No?
There has to be a behavioral health tie-in to it.
Well, yeah, someone just destroyed their property, it's behavioral health.
Well, yeah, behavioral health service.
Yeah, you have to be funding behavioral health services at the facility.
You have to fund some services to help the business get through it. I don't know, I'm just throwing out some hyperbole's here, but I, I mean, they're having some mental health issues now because their property was just destroyed, and there's fecal matter all over the windows. I would be a little mentally disturbed myself.
I think we are living with the repercussions of a many decades-long, successful endeavor to dismantle the criminal justice system in the state of Washington. So I love that we're here together, and we are all on the same side, I know that, that we are trying to be creative in finding solutions to the problems that we all saw coming. to be creative in finding solutions to the problems that we all saw coming, that we have to work within the constraints that we have with the funds that are coming in that come with strings. Do we choose not to take the money? Sometimes not taking the money is a choice. We talked about that earlier. And that's still on the table, as far as I'm concerned. How do we find, you know, this for me, how do we get creative, like using environmental and public health dollars to go in and clean out active encampments, to make it uncomfortable for them to not be near the services? There are ways, and Commissioner Curtis just mentioned some, too. I think the point is that we continue to welcome the opportunity to think creatively in ways that our community cannot do what the West Side is doing, and not do what has been repeated everywhere else, knowing that we do have some really great ideas on how we're going to solve for this. But they are, to your very good point, Councilmember Brown, that it, some of these do take time, and those are big ones. But remember, you know, they had the aim of dismantling this entire system, and they have succeeded. It was defund the police, it's don't fund public defense, it's don't build any new jails, it's change the laws, make it very difficult.
I think we all agree that, you know, that our state legislature and other authorities are a huge part of the problem, because they make decisions without considering the entire circumstance of everybody in the state. And we all need to, I think, agree to work it together as a county and a city to continually work to make some changes in the line of PSO. Councilmember Hurre, you had a question, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
I was just going to say, just speaking from my own personal experience, the money that I pay in property taxes, which is more than I earn being a landlord, is peanuts compared to what I spend repairing the damage from homeless people, and from tenants who no longer care to take care of the property. Five years ago, the problems that I'm seeing today were nonexistent. And it just shocks me. I, I see people in a two-bedroom apartment for six months, and, and it costs $20,000 to repair it after they're done. That being said, I have also reached out and tried to help people. And, you know, I, I think most of us here are Christian, and we believe in trying to be, treat others the way we'd like to be treated. And, and I've had some really awesome experiences with a few people in helping them to get onto a better path and, and get back to responsibility. The thing that is really frustrating to me, though, is that the failure rate is five times the success rate. You know, for every person that I can help, there's five or six that cost me money to do business with them. And, and that's just not sustainable. As landlords, I'm president of the local landlords association. We tell people, you cannot afford, in today's environment, to take a risk on anybody if they don't have perfect credit, perfect rental history, and a good debt-to-income ratio. And when we live in a city where 25 or 50% of the renters are highly leveraged, they're spending 50% of their income, that means that landlords don't want to do business with them because it's too expensive. Poor people are getting priced out of existence. And, and to me, that's a huge problem that kind of goes back to everything that we're talking about tonight. People are getting priced out of existence, and as a result, they lose hope, and then they get into these bad ways.
I'd like to change the focus a little bit, because we all have the same frustration, the same concern, the same stories, all the emphasis. I'd like us to kind of talk about some possible things that we can do. And certainly, one of them is to, is to work with our legislature, you know, to put constant pressure on our legislators to do the right thing, you know, to consider all of these things and do the right thing. That being said, I want to say that I, I went on the same tour as Commissioner Curtis did. He was kind enough to invite me, thank you very much. So I saw the possibility of privately-owned industry, and some of the things they can do to take some of the pressure off. And, and I really liked what I saw. But the other is, what, you know, that's a three-year process down the road, maybe four, I don't know. What can, the things we can be doing? One of the things that Yakima is now working on a diversion court. And so using a diversion court where they have the choice of, of being involved in services, and getting help, and structure, and getting their ID, and getting job training, where all of those things are available to them without having to go to jail. That's a positive step. You know, there are things that we, the small things that we can do right now, that we need to continue to do, are pro-acting, and working with service providers, another example. There are things that we're, we're starting to do, we can do, and need to just, you know, we have the resources here locally to promote that forward and do it. So I'd like us to focus on what we can do now, and what we can project doing in the future. Councilmember Brown?
I want to go back to your downtown cleanup proposal thing that you guys are working on. Is that something that can be on private property and help?
Yeah.
It's not just like, you know, doing the same thing we already have Clean Cities doing.
Yeah. And I had actually talked to city manager, Vicki Baker, a little bit about it, because I wasn't sure exactly what you're saying. Are we duplicating Clean Cities? Should I have this concept and give it over to the city? Would you guys rather run it? Is it complement what you're doing? And one of the benefits is that it's being done through, I mean, certainly, if there was a private property owner that didn't want these services provided near where they are, then they'd have the right to tell us not to. But, you know, it's being provided through day and through UGM, so they're not limited jurisdictionally necessarily in the same way that a government organization would be. And the funding for the employees is coming from People for People, so it's all from nonprofits.
But I, I think the councilmember's question is like, so let's say a private owner calls us and wants something to be cleaned up. Can our, this People for People program go over to that private property and do the cleanups? Because it sounds like the city is saying, no, that we're not allowed to utilize those resources in that way. I may have not heard that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, our Clean Cities program is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Vicki, in the back, but I'm pretty sure we just focus on public right-of-ways, public, you know, sidewalks. Correct? Yeah, they're shaking their heads, yes.
And fast. I have seen it in action, that truck. An amazing ability to use a boom around electrical poles.
Yeah. Which, which is helpful, right? Obviously, having the sidewalks clean is, is a big deal, and picking up garbage off the street is a big deal. However, it's all the private property stuff that's behind and hooked and nook and cranny it all over.
The cost.
Yeah. You know, that, they don't really have a way to recoup any of that.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I appreciate the comment about partnership and working together. I really, I really do think that that really is our best chance for, for solutions. I mean, we can, we can work separately, but it seems like it's, it works better when we work together. You know, and I, and I'll give you some examples of that. One happens to be the DCR program that's been mentioned tonight. You know, that's something that we've expanded, you know, through the mental health sales tax dollars, and made that more flexible by getting vehicles for those DCRs. And, and I think that's something we can continue to build on. That's, that's, you know, that's a help. With the passage of 5696, I think there's some really opportunities for us to construct some more permanent supportive housing. I think there's, there are opportunities there. We talked about cleanup a little bit, and, and maybe we ought to talk a little bit about what we've seen as at least a partial success story. I remember when I became commissioner four years ago, walking out on the greenway, and we had, we had homeless camps all over the place. We haven't cured it all yet, but it's a lot better than it was four years ago.
The little, the little thing, the little area, you know I'm going to get it.
Right, that little area.
Besides your area.
Yeah, right. Yeah, which is an interesting.
Well, there has been noticeable change on the green.
There has been. So, so we, we can make change, you know, if we work together and put our minds to it. Topisch Hospital actually has an expansion for a behavioral health facility, which they have. So we ought to see another 20 beds up there, 20 to 25 beds in the next year or two. I mean, construction's going on right now. And that will give an opportunity, they're, they're targeted to ITA patients, so, which, which we need for some of these people suffering with addictions right now. Continuing to push on changing the ITA law, so people are being brought back to life. I, I'd love to have the argument with the ACLU that somehow if we're involuntary treating someone who's come, we brought back to life, that somehow we're violating their rights by putting them in an institution. You know, the other point is, you know, continuing to get, have law enforcement involved, to continue to put the pressure. We talked about making, you know, it uncomfortable, trying to force them into services, and, and the opportunity for local, local codes, you know, to see, maybe take another look at those and see if there are areas where we can improve those to, you know, to help out our local businesses and residents, and, and put a little pressure on again.
I think combining city and council and county codes and making them very similar, so they all have the same leverage.
Yes, I think it makes sense.
Councilmember Hurre?
Mayor Byers, you mentioned the legislature, working with them. Possible solution, governments bloated, I just thought of this as you guys were speaking. Have we considered kind of scaling back incrementally our resources at all? Because that is something we can control. I know, you know, if you keep feeding the bears, they'll come back, if you've ever been camping. But could we, could we, is that something we could realistically do instead of waiting on the legislature for them to get their act in order?
If, if you don't mind me clarifying, Councilmember Berg, so like, totally defunding?
I'm not saying totally.
Totally.
Is it all or nothing?
No. No, no, it's not. And Esther, you can clarify me. I mean, there are certain things that are frankly are just passed through, so whether or not the county takes a hold of those dollars and then develops the contracts, those dollars are still available for anyone, anyone, any jurisdiction and/or stakeholder to apply for them. So the, the money's going to be there and deployed regardless.
So does the state approve that if we're, if we're not approving those grants?
The county applies. The state says, for example, for the rental assistance in various categories, that this is how much they've allotted to Yakima County. And Yakima County then has the first right to be able to apply to be the grant recipient, and then be able to create contracts for our sub-grant recipients. If we decline, let's say, or say, you know what, if you're saying it's $3.6 million available, we're only going to apply for $2 million to pass through, then the providers in our area could go directly to the state and apply on their own for those funds. Which is, again, I think what Commissioner Curtis was trying to say, is that at least thus far, the decision of the board has been that we would rather be the ones to have the pass-through, so that we could create our contracts and create some kind of guidelines on them as much as we are legally allowed to, and to have some accountability there.
And if I could piggyback on that just really quickly, one of the things that we have done with the contracts that we have dispersed recently, or subcontracted for, is that we have required that they provide data for us. The state doesn't require that of us, but we're asking for it anyway. And we're, and our, and our goal with that is to be able to look at that at the end of the funding periods and say, okay, what have we accomplished with this money? And if they're accomplishing something, great, we can continue to move forward with them and work with them. If not, we may decide not to fund them, because it's not worth it.
So I do have a question about, I'll get right back to you. I have a question about case management that is provided by service providers. Do you have any ability to define what that might look like? Or do they just say, we're going to do case management, they might visit once a week, and as long as the garbage is out the door, you know? Is there any accountability built into case management?
Well, this is actually one of the reasons, Mayor Byers, why I was, made the proposal to not do the hotel vouchers anymore. Because although it was required that they go and check in on these people once a day, I think the way I worded it was, would they check the room like I check my six-year-old's room after he's told me he's cleaned his room, and I'm going up to check? Because any mom who's done that knows that, you know. And the answer was, well, so, we, we don't know. And, and short of us being there, any of our representatives or our staff who would be involved, we wouldn't know. And so, you know, there isn't, they're not going in with video cameras, you know. So it's up to the individual who does the checking and the outreach. And so there isn't anything, again, and it comes down to what could we actually check and enforce?
Well, my thought is not just checking to make sure it's clean, but checking to make sure they are complying with, with any services. You know, as part of being in there is that you get some kind of minimal service, so you begin to look at life changes. That's my question.
They do check, so if they have, if they're on probation, or if they're in diversion court, or whatever their involvement is with that aspect of the services of care, then they, they do say, you know, hey, you're supposed to go to your counseling appointment, or your therapist, or your treatment provider on these dates. Did you go? That kind of a thing. So yes, that's there.
And they'll be providing that information to the service provider who's giving them rent assistance, and they report back to you.
Rental assistance is different, so they're...
I mean, in any program, whether it's case management, that's my question. Can you, can you build a certain amount of structure accountability?
Accountability. Limited.
Yeah. And I, I think this might be something where we could have Esther chip in. I will mention that Human Services here for several years actually done a monthly ride-along with the Yakima PD, just to get a real feel for what's actually happening out there. And when they developed the Case Manager, you know, program here with, with the department, took a lot of that information that they'd gathered through those ride-alongs to form that.
One thing I would just add to what Commissioner McKenney was saying especially, is that while there isn't necessarily always strict contract language around what case management looks like, and a large part of that is because case management looks different at every agency, and it's always a fine balance when you're in government between having requirements and upholding accountability standards, and allowing for the flexibility that makes it easier to work with government, so we're not just overly bureaucratic and overly monitoring, and making it difficult to be nimble and to be agile as a provider. But where we really want, and why we've really leaned into data, is that rather than saying, here's a case management standard, and we're going to check and make sure that you're making sure that they're making sure, you know, like, which becomes very difficult to enforce, we're really looking to say, well, what do your outcomes look like? Because if you're doing good case management, then you should have good outcomes. And, and that's, I think, where we have better ease as a government funder to lean into the accountability pieces that you're looking for. Because at the end of the day, that's the purpose of the, the case management, to the extent that you're asking about, is that it works.
Well, I'm not sure it works as well as we'd like it to. You know, because I worked in the mental health for 22 years, and I had contracts with the state where I was doing in-home visitations two to three times a week, and standards of behavior, standards of climate, standards of safety. And I kept that documentation myself, and I'd give it back to, to the department, and, and I'd testify in court about it. You know, there was, there was accountability built into the structure of that, so.
So quickly, on, so here's a few things that I think, if we can resolve this. One is 40% going to operations and admin for rental assistance. You said at least 60% is going to actually rentals. So that means, you know, there's at least 30% that's not. So, so if, if there's some way to shrink that, that would be great. More towards rental assistance, less towards that aspect. The other aspect that I'd like is, if there is a way, I don't know, legal counsel might need to help figure this one out, but if there is a way to put some sort of accountability to the rental assistance program, I, I think that, because I'm going to, I'm going to lay out a different picture for you. One of the data pieces that I have still not got has been, I would like to know where, generally, where these rental assistance properties are. And the reason for that is that the, the number that you see tonight is just from our cops were $500,000. That's, that's just for the, the calls that they mentioned. That has nothing to do with the fact of all the different domestic violence calls, and all the other calls that they're making, that in my opinion, what, if you overlaid our crime map over the top of where those rental assistance properties are, I, I, there is probably some correlation to what's going on. Not necessarily all the time, I understand that. But there is, so then I'm starting to go, so are we funding our own, our own crime at this point? And so I'm going, there has to be a way for us to add some sort of accountability to that, because at the end of the day, I'm going, we just talked 500,000. I've got a $35 million budget for police. And if they're responding to the rental assistance housing all across the city, more so than the rest of the citizens of Yakima, we have a huge problem with that. Because that is funding our own, I mean, our cops, if they can't show up to a house out in West Valley because there's a property crime that has happened, which happens all the time out there, and they can't show up to that because they're having to go deal with all of these other issues that are around. So that's, that's a data set that I would like to see, so that, and then somehow be able to correlate and go, if there is some sort of restriction or accountability or something that we can put on rental assistance, that would be good.
Can I ask how theoretically, what, so you're saying theoretically, and I want to put words in your mouth, that you would be ineligible to receive rental assistance if there was a domestic violence call to your home?
I don't know what it would be, but...
I'm trying to understand what, what would be the, so if, if you...
I think there needs to be some sort of accountability. If you're receiving taxpayer funds for assistance to your housing. Now, look, I, I want to house you. I have no problem housing you. But if you're then committing 15 acts of violence in that neighborhood, which has now caused all these other issues in that neighborhood, which has now caused maybe, you know, $10 million of cops' response time to come into that area, that's a, that's a huge problem.
So what I'm hearing you, though, say is specifically, then you would make that individual ineligible for receiving rental housing. I'm guessing that a lot of times that there are, the recipient of the rental housing might not necessarily be the individual who is causing the crime. the crime. Um, there are a lot of, I think, they are living with someone else who is maybe a bit more responsible enough at least to sign a contract and pass a credit check and, and, you know, rent a home. Um, but, um, there are certain, I, I think it's an interesting question that there, that we'd have to think through, that, um, you're not unnecessarily prohibiting people who wouldn't have the ability, um, to effect and effectuate a change on a crime occurring in their home. And I'm just thinking of, you know, women who might be single women, parents who, you know, have teenagers who might be gang members and, you know, there are some consequences to that. And that's something that, you know, we have to, that I'd be interested in talking through what your idea is.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I haven't fully fleshed that out, but my opinion has been, I'm going, if there is no accountability to those dollars necessarily, then, you know, I mean, we're in a budget hole inside the city of Yakima right now. And I'm, and I'm going, man, if we're talking efficiency sake, if our cops are having to respond to these property, I mean, we call them chronic nuisance properties. In a, in a certain sense, there's some of that that we deal with on another basis. But we're having to make these calls over and over again. I'm like, there has to be a, a way that the funder is able to hold, uh, the accountability, the purse strings per se to that. The, the second aspect of this though, that I would like to ask as well is, so you talked about Commissioner Lindy, you talked about, um, after, you know, the funding cycle to be able to look at the data and not fund it. So that could be what, two years, three years, the funding cycle?
We actually made it so that after, they're two-year contracts and that after one year, we can decide to sever the remaining time of the contract.
Okay, great. That's the question I had. Because I'm going, we wait in two years, that's a long time.
I, I think, uh, before I ask you, uh, your question, Councilman, I'm going to ask Mr. Herrera and the other, the two online, if they have any comments at this point. No? Okay. Councilwoman Roy, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
No comments. My mind is just processing everything we're, we're talking about right now, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mendicchio?
I've had a lot of thoughts, um, but, uh, I'm just kind of taking it all in and it is food for thought. And some ideas are kind of up here in this gray area. So, um, but yeah, this is a great conversation and maybe, maybe something will come of this.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Glenn.
To what we were talking about before, I had this discussion with, uh, the police chief. I said, you know, for most of our lives, the police would either, we're going to get you monetarily or we'll take away your freedom if you don't follow the law. But what we have with the homeless people, neither one of those is any type of incentive to follow the law. We need to find another way to incent them to be law-abiding citizens. And my experience has been, most of the people that are homeless and, and on the low end, they are getting a check every month for disability or SSI or veterans benefits. They're getting food stamps. And all of those things, the government has said they're not attachable. So they just use those with impunity and they don't feel any sense of responsibility. I don't know if there's, it, we'd have to change laws clear at the top to do it, but why are we giving people money every month when they are deliberately costing us money? And, and you talk about the, the reasons for it. I mean, I know homeless people who their parents have just thrown up their arms and says, get out of here. I don't ever want you back. I can't afford to have you around. I know other homeless people whose parents said, I've got a room for you. Come stay here. And they won't do it. It's a very individual situation. And everything that I've seen that has been successful has reached out to the individual and said, let's take your problem and let's work on it. And we kind of want to close, put it all in one big group and say, let's just fix it all the same way. It doesn't work. We've got to have the flexibility to do that. And, and to me, that really opens the door for, uh, you know, churches that have reached out and taken somebody under their arms and said, hey, let us help you get back on your feet. Let's see if we can make this work. You know, this, it's not just a money issue. I think it's a love issue. If people don't feel loved and cared about, they don't, they don't care if they're destroying your property. They don't care if they're doing things, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a personal people issue that needs to be addressed, not just in dollars and cents.
I want to talk about outcomes.
Go ahead. And then we're gonna, I'm gonna read back around the situations again.
Okay, yeah, well, that's-
Mayor Byers?
Yes?
I, I just did have a thought. Um, I just really hear us talking with very broad strokes, broad brushes about what people who are homeless are doing or what they're not doing. And I think we have to keep in mind that there's a lot of, there, there's a wide variety of reasons why people are homeless. It's not just because they're mentally ill or they're drug addicted. Some come from domestic violence, some come from lack of a job, some come from aging out of foster care. Um, so we can't paint a broad brush and say they're all criminals or they're, they're worthy of being incarcerated because, just because they're homeless.
Thank you.
Very well said.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will say, thank you, Councilwoman Mendicchio. I will also say that, um, I would agree with that. But I would also say we have those that are, for example, have lost a job or something very sudden unexpected, a medical expense, they are the ones most likely to engage in services and to come-
Well, the numbers show that.
Yeah. And so we're doing the right thing in those situations. So it's what we're having the greatest problems with is not those situations, so.
Okay. I want to talk about the outcomes piece a little bit. When you guys are talking about the funding, looking at it over a year, um, for your grants, um, i- is it like a lot, a lot, I mean, I've sat in a lot of coalition meetings, so I've looked at this process a lot. It, it seems to be more about compliance than it is outcomes when it comes to, uh, funding. This is an allowable use. This is an allowable thing. This is, you can do this. This is that. It's not necessarily best practices or best strategy or what's approachable and what's working. It's, you know, I can use this tool. This is allowed under the state. I can do this. And so for me is if we look at it, and the public probably wants to know this, is a year out from now on this funding cycle, are you looking at outcomes as the metric to judge whether it's, and I, not compliance, but outcomes as the, the metric to actually what is funded in the county? Um, because I think that's very important from trying to hold that accountable.
Mayor Byers, if I may, and then I'm, I'm going to turn it over to you, Esther. I will say, one of the most recent things we did two years ago with the renewals of all of our, uh, housing and homeless assistance dollars is we did specify targeted outcomes. And we don't wait a year for that data, Commissioner, or Councilmember Brown. That data is reported quarterly and it's fed to the commissioners and we look at it. And it's a requirement that our service providers have to enter those outcome data in our HMIS on a regular, uh, monthly basis before they even get paid. So we've really robustly stepped further in the data, uh, requirement and highlighting that outcomes are important to, to the homeless, uh, coalition and council. But Esther, I, I think it's important to highlight, like, for HMIS, and we were talking about case management, HMIS is not case management. It purely is a input-output. That's all it is. And frankly, that's been one of the most frustrating things for me is that the county doesn't have total control over this HMIS system. We have to, we're at the will of the state. And the state is very lenient on what they will allow our service providers to dump data into it so that we can do all these creative things. So that we know that little Johnny has been staying at Rod's house for six years, but on the case management side, this was what caused him to exit homelessness. Like that reality, that data, we don't. And so we depend heavily on our service providers because they truly are the case management entities, not the county.
Is there a way to get a case management system countywide?
There's complexity to that. And Esther, I, I just asked that you kind of highlight why the case, the unified case, uh, because we've talked a lot about this.
Uh, real quickly, I just want to say that to your point, um, the, that previously to my joining the commissioners board, it was just compliance. And, and the data was what I was really wanting to get so that we could make our decisions based off outcomes. And so the previous two years, what we did is we amended and required that all the service providers had to use HMIS. In fact, we gave them, some of them grant funds because they weren't using HMIS. And that was simply determined to be at least the one place where we could have everyone put the information and then get them to the point where everyone was on HMIS. And then now, we got them there. And now these next two years are, these are the data points that we want because going forward, we're going to make decisions based off of measured outcomes, based off the data that we've asked you to provide or required that you provide to us. But previous to that, it was simply success of spending all the money.
Yeah. And, and I would say we've had a tremendous amount of support from the commissioners and direction from the commissioners on our, our expansion of our data efforts. Um, when we took over, uh, the homeless management information system along with the other components of the homeless program, it was a system that had been neglected for probably almost a decade. And providers were putting information into it as part of a contract requirement because it was something they had to do. But, um, the data was not meaningful that was inside of it. We cleaned out projects that were, uh, we like to say, older than every single member of our staff in the homeless program. There were projects that were just defunct in there. Um, and there was data just kind of swirling in little eddies and, and the outcomes were not clearly measurable because the infrastructure of the system had been neglected for so long. And so a huge part of what we did was, um, going in, doing technical assistance with our providers, um, because the data that we get out is only as good as the data that's getting put in, working really closely with the state. Um, as Commissioner Curtis said, the state has overarching control over our HMIS system because we are a balance of state community. Um, that balance of state, we, we used to be a, uh, independent COC, Continuum of Care. Um, and that independent COC status was forfeited, um, when YB Cog took over the program. And we joined Balance of State's, uh, COC, which is the Washington State Continuum of Care. And that means what we gave up was the ability to have independent control over our HMIS over, uh, in, in addition to a number of other things. So, uh, we are now required to be compliant and participatory in the state's HMIS system. Um, and we, we do what we can with that system, but it really limits us in our ability to pick the software that we use, add additional softwares that might speak to it. Um, it's something we've talked about before with Commissioner Curtis, um, around wanting to explore how we could either push back at the state level, which we've really worked to do. Melissa, one of the staff on our team, is now a chair of the Coordinated Entry Balance of State Subcommittee, which is a very exciting government sentence. Um, but, um, we really have worked really hard over the last few years to try and elevate Yakima County's position within the balance of state so that we can be a stronger advocate for the needs that we actually have in our community, understanding we're limited to the rules now that the state applies to all the Balance of State Subcommittee members.
How often is the data audited that comes in from these providers?
Uh, so we have-
Who's audited in?
Yeah, we have a monthly requirement to enter data and we've gotten a lot stricter with that since we've been doing the technical assistance. Um, and it's gotten to the point where we've actually withheld reimbursements from providers if we don't see that their data has come in that month. Um, and then on a quarterly basis, we do sort of mini LSAs, which are little audits with all of our providers. And then annually, we do a larger one.
Well, and then I'll clarify too. Also, the Department of Commerce does a, and they have a dashboard where you can see, they call it data accuracy or data integrity. It basically means for every data point that's in the system, how much of all the other details are actually tracked, gender, age, that type of thing. And so they give you a percentage. And we've improved drastically, but that, I mean, and again, I want to give props to our service providers. It's a lot to ask of them. When you have 230 people checking into your shelter every single day to capture that data, to input it and ensure that it's done in a timely, timely manner and doing all the things that we're asking, you know, our, our service providers have really, really stepped up these past few years. And I, I, I think we're going to see the return because the data we have is actually something we can use us as policymakers.
Is-
Councilwoman.
So as we're looking for solutions, uh, I know over the last couple of months, we've had discussions with our city council. And I want to commend the police for the increased vigilance that they've had on the homeless issue because it has made a very noticeable difference. The numbers are not the same as they were before. And to me, that's a key part of it. They don't have the option to stay on the street. Then they're more likely to take advantage of the programs where we can help them. But if we give them the option to stay on the street, nothing's going to get fixed. So even though it's a very ugly job that we're asking them to do, I'm very grateful that you're doing it. And I think it's a key part of the component. We've got to get them off the streets and then they can come in and use all these programs that you're running to help get them back on their feet again.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think this has been a great conversation and a, a good starting point for us. I, I, I welcome the idea to not just work together now, but in the future. But I wanted to touch on a, just a, a little bit different angle if I could. And that is the fact that I've had the chance to go over the years to drug court graduations and meet people that have gone through this program. And one of the things, and it is very interesting to me because it's not prescribed, it's not a requirement, any of these programs. But yet, when I hear from these, these drug court graduates, I mean, they're obviously happy because they got their life back, they got their job back, they got their kids back many times. But, but without me prompting or asking, they'll tell me the role that God took in, 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 in healing them. And I, I just, um, uh, sometimes we think that that's difficult for us to do in a city position. I mean, we believe in freedom from religion, but it seems to me that we could, should encourage wherever we have the opportunity to get people involved with the churches and, and religion. And, and also to look at ways, are, are things that we do as elected officials contributing or detracting from family succeeding? Now, I'll give you a case in point. And not all this will apply to us on a local level, but I recently attended a wedding of someone who basically had lived together for many years and finally decided to get married. And, and, uh, and they wanted to do it because they felt it was the right thing before God. But in the conversation, it was interesting because they acknowledged that the fact was that becoming married, they felt that that was going to make them ineligible for some of the programs that they had relied on in the past. And it's, it's just kind of sad that there's that first incentive. We don't, you know, that's something that was, that's a state program. It's not a, it's not a local issue, but just something for, I mean, maybe it's a little ethereal, but I think it's something to think about as we, as we make decisions. Are, are they, you know, are they pro-religion or are they pro-family?
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment as well at this point. Um, I had the opportunity to go a lot of, uh, the drug court or diversion court graduations. And it's been, um, it's, I have been involved in the other side of court in terms of families going to court to try to keep their families. But watching people come out this end and having them talk about having been given the opportunity to, to make changes in their life. And it might take them six months or a year, whatever that is, and to find services. But if they stay with it and they go through it, they come out, they are so well-prepared to become contributing members. And they really want that. They want to be contributing members in their community for the sake of themselves and their family. Um, so it's been wonderful to hear that, which is why I'm such a big supporter of that kind of a court system. I've seen it over and over again. The other thing is, and I think, um, I think, Mr. Glenn, you mentioned this earlier, is that are there things that our faith community can offer us? If we could define some things that our faith community could offer to help the situation in the city and in the county, what would we ask them to do? And I think we ought to, as we're looking at solutions, we ought to come up with some ideas that we could ask them to do and see how many are willing to really help us with that.
24-hour prayer vigils over those people who are on private property?
That would be something. Um, a question I, I, you know, when we had this original discussion, Kyle and I were talking about, um, you know, administrator to the program or different things like that. My, my question is, what from the county's perspective do you need from the city to do all the things? Like what do you need from us? Is there, is there an ordinance? Is there, you know, the, the aspects of, I mean, I've, I've had long discussions with our city attorney about, I don't think we're going to, there's, we have enough laws on the books. There, there's enough things that we can do from a law-
You have too many laws on the books, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. And, uh, I don't think we need more laws. Um, but I'm going, from the city's perspective, because, I mean, we're really at our wits' end. I mean, our, our business community is at their end. They're, they're, with more taxes coming, um, at the state level, they are at their breaking point financially, which means it's the breaking point of this community. And so I'm going, how, instead of just complaining about it, how do we actually solve this for them? They don't have 15 years to wait for a jail or 10 years to wait for a jail. Um, they, they need, you know, six months, four months, eight months. Like what are things that we can start doing? Um, and from the city's perspective, what do you need from us to help that process happen? Um, you know, I know the biggest complaint that sometimes folks have is the collaboration doesn't seem like it's there. Um, and I, and I will dispel that. I, I, I do think there's enough collaboration that's happening. I think sometimes maybe in providers, there's not necessarily always the collaboration that exists. Um, but, you know, we had an executive board meeting where we talked about just this exact thing is, so what do you need? Tell us what you need. Because I don't have the solution. I'm not a homeless expert by any means. I don't have a degree in it. I don't try to play one on TV. That's not, that's not me. But- But I am dedicated to making sure that our community's voice is heard and that our businesses actually have, like, some hope that things are coming. Because right now, they don't. They just, they just keep getting piled on. And so that's my overarching question is, how do we, one, to wrap this conversation up a little bit, but is, what do you need from us? How can we make this thing better for our community?
That's a great question. I think, you know, one thing that comes to mind to me immediately is the idea of having a conversation about our codes to make sure that they mesh properly and that we're, so we're kind of reading off the same page.
From a cleanup standpoint, that's kind of been my area of hyper-focus, is removing the leaf behind, so at least, you know, giving a semblance of, of the reflection of what we believe that we are as a community and trying to keep those areas of underpasses, overpasses, heavily trafficked areas clean. Make frequent calls to, through our code enforcement directly with the Washington State Department of Transportation. So I welcome a direct communication when you have folks who do your Yak back, if you want to court, send that immediately also to TUA, the county code enforcement, so that we can assess where and what right of way it is-
What is it called?
Yak back.
You have a Yak-
Yeah, yours.
Our Yak back.
Oh, it's Tua Vang. He's our Yak name.
Code enforcement. I was like, wow, that is quite the system name there.
Yeah, Tua Vang. Yak back, Tua Vang. And then we continue to take the lead on those cleanup efforts too, where we have MOU signed. And then we do our cleanups where we allow the dumping that is fee-free, so that we can encourage cleanups as well. If you wanted to participate in that too and help be involved in not only disseminating that, sponsoring an extra day, something along those lines, but that's encouraging our faith community, our nonprofit community, our volunteer citizens to be a part of cleanup. Because the long-term solutions are going to take a little bit longer, but I do think we need to absolutely be relentless in the cleanup. And again, try to remove the signs. We know that doesn't solve the problem, but at least we want to continue to have a society that looks like it functions well, that it's safe and clean, that businesses don't have these types of blight issues and public health safety issues. So I would love to be a part of coordinating for that aspect.
And the clean side, can you go on private property with some of these dollars?
Well, I know that-
The program that has been proposed by Esther is something that we believe it would allow them to go on private property, you as the city-
I didn't quite understand earlier.
Yeah, yeah, as you as a, might not be able to as a lead agency for the city cleanup, it sounds like. But, you know, again, we're always looking for ways, and maybe that means that we partner with someone who does have the ability.
I just wanted to add too, we do host a monthly landowners meeting, and that's actually a place we'd love to get more traction and attendance. I think we just had our landowners meeting today, and there were 12 providers and like one landowner. But the concept there is that we have a platform where BNSF, city, county, anybody who owns land that's affected by unsanctioned encampments can come and get support from outreach, and we can try and go out and be engaging with people who, you know-
We don't try, we do.
Yeah, yes. Well, we do go out and engage with those people, and we coordinate with the outreach teams to make sure they're putting special emphasis and focus on those areas that are being identified, and we can come up with a strategy together, so.
And one of the things I'd like to see in the five-year plan, or the funding that we do is cleanup. Like, I mean, we're spending almost a million dollars at the city just doing our own cleanup process. Million dollars we could put towards, you know, solving our budget hole. But funding that aspect is a huge ask. The other one, though, is I'm wondering if there's a way to, there's a ton of debris removal companies in our community. I mean, I think I know of six off the top of my head, that they're literally running nonstop, picking up private, you know, private households' stuff, junk, throwing it away, junk removal. And so I'm going, is there a way that we can, in this next funding cycle or different things, is there a way for us to actually fund more of that aspect? That aspect, I know enforcement's not a part of that.
And but stopping the spigot, and you actually touched on this, is that we have a lot of well-meaning volunteers in the community who likes to hand out sleeping bags and blankets and hats and jackets and coats and all these things. And those things are what absolutely ends up dumped on the side of a business, you know, soiled and in our greenway spaces, our rivers. And so I think we could very much partner on a communication effort in the community to talk about, you know, how can you actually help people who you deem to be in need and do it in a way that is also not contributing to some of the unfortunate blight that comes along. It's well-meaning, and we all understand, you know, a lot of our children are involved in giving, you know, the little boxes with toothbrushes and, you know, and it is, it's a wonderful way to show compassion and empathy, which we cannot lose on our hearts. But maybe some kind of a campaign to talk about what is a way that you can actually be a part of the solution and involve the community and give them a pathway to be helpful that isn't handing out something that ends up in the river.
Commissioner, you're next.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I think, let's go back to the conversation involving our churches. I, you know, I know that, for example, Yakima's had the community leaf rake, you know, every fall typically, and I think a spring cleanup too, if I remember, maybe not every year, but maybe we, maybe we take a look at going back to our churches, you know, in the city and asking them to participate, and maybe it's in a different way. Maybe it's, maybe we do something monthly with them, or, you know, you rotate through churches and have them participate. I know that our churches, you know, participated regularly with those things, but maybe we call on them and say, hey, we need your help.
That's, I agree that we can, we can really give some direction to the faith community on how they can be less helpful. I think you're next.
And in addition to things to collaborate on, I think that as a county and as a city, if we told our police that drug offenders or drug dealers should be given about as much respect as cold-blooded murderers, so many people in our city have died because of drugs, and yet there are people dealing drugs every day. I can go out on the street, that's to some of my properties, and I know the people who are dealing the drugs, and it's just irritates me. They ought to be tried for murder. We need to, we need to start selling this idea to the public because a lot of our homelessness is a result of getting involved in drugs. It makes you abandon everything else that's important in life.
Thank you. Commissioner, you're next.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief because I know we're going up against time here. So one, I think, Councilmember Brown, I appreciate your question wholeheartedly because I think when you pose that question, what can the city do? You pose it with a sense of frustration, and I'm just as frustrated as you are. I think one thing, though, as electeds, we need to accept that we can't just say something is out of our control anymore. We can point blame at the state, we can point blame at the border, we can point blame wherever. The reality is, we have to deal with it. And frankly, I think in the homeless response system, at least on the policy side, we've neglected it for quite some time. And so I think, one, that we as electeds need to continuously be engaged, and we need to push, push, push. The second thing I would add is that we got to quit acting in a siloed capacity. I think the reality is, it's not a homeless response system and a law enforcement issue and a business issue, it's all one. We're all in it together, and every component, every stakeholder plays a unique role in this system. And the system has to be willing to adapt and flex. We can't keep doing the same thing every single year. And we've got to accept that, you know, we may be innovative and throw in this program, and it may not produce the outcomes we anticipated, but we retract and we try again. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, we're doing our best to come up with strategies, but I want to acknowledge that, you know, service providers, the folks who are on the front line that do this every single day, they know the community, they know what they're working with, and they do know that what works. And those voices are a part of the solutions. And lastly, I will close that, you know, we had our first strategic planning session to update the five-year plan. As you know, Councilmember Brown, in council, we're taking a different approach on how we're crafting this thing. This isn't a five-year plan that just sits on a shelf. It is a living, breathing document that brought together 110 participants, professionals in our community, stakeholders, community members, and I think we need to give them the opportunity through that process and leverage those outcomes and strategies that they've identified. So thank you.
So, can I say one more thing? Okay, two things, actually. The, sorry, there's two more. Man, I'm really passionate about this, guys. There's a building by the fairgrounds, it's called the Yak. You guys have it, it's your building. Is that not a building that can be utilized for some sort of, not a jail, I'm not talking about a jail, but from a, from a mental health, somewhere we can bring people that need help type of thing? That is, I don't know.
If someone wants to purchase it, yes. So, and we do, we do have a possibility of a buyer for that building for the purposes that would actually provide services directly tied to what we're talking about right now. I continue to believe that it is not, I will not support county government owning and operating a medical facility or a treatment facility. I believe that the government is the most expensive way to not solve problems, which is where we're at right now. So I would like to see the type of business opportunity that someone, and actually create legislation that would encourage a business to come in and solve these problems and make money doing it, because that's the point. And unfortunately, what I see what happens when government get involved in this thing, it's because it's filling a void, and it's because the private sector isn't doing it. Why isn't the private sector doing it? Because it doesn't make them any money. So we have to think about how to change laws and regulations so that the private sector can help us solve a problem that we have as society and make money doing it. Because if they're making money doing it, they're going to get better and better at solving the problem. But we continue to-
Or they grow the problem.
But the government is not the answer, because the government will only make the problem bigger and cost more money. We are dealing with the, with that type of habitual decision-making. So while I appreciate your suggestion, I am in favor of it as long as it is a private company or the state or the feds, which as a taxpayer, I'm not excited about, but I'd love to give it off our rent roll, if it was providing a service that was going to benefit our community.
Would you be experimenting, worth experimenting, a pilot? Not, I'm just trying to think of like a, for example, if I am a private-
There's a facility already in the Tri-Cities, which is similar to comprehensive. So we already have examples right now. What we need is more, more comprehensive, more comprehensive competition. Why don't we have a competition to comprehensive? I would love to have three comprehensives around. I would love to have them expand their service offerings and have a profitable endeavor doing that.
Right, but when you look at, I mean, any franchise or different business that comes into a demographic, into an area, you know, they first have to see if it's, you're right, profitable, I understand that. But the other aspect is, well, does this model work in this community? And Tri-Cities is not Yakima.
I think we've demonstrated tonight, there's enough business for someone to come into town.
So I'd like at this point to kind of give each person a minute or two to consolidate their thoughts and bring this part to an end, and then we'll move into public comment.
Do you want to go around roundtable, or?
We can do that. We'll start with Councilman Herrera.
I just want to point out, Commissioner Curtis brought up the housing plans, strategic plan, and also somebody missing at the table. So somebody, I think I read or been informed that you had people that had recently experienced homelessness, so that's always a good perspective to get their voice and get what really, reality, what they're going through and what their encounters with any entity, organization, city, county, state as well too. So that's great to have them at the table as well. And hoping to go to the next one, I'm seeing here it's on Tuesday, May 13th.
Thank you. Councilman Glenn.
Well, I've said a lot during the course of the evening, but I really like the idea of, we've got to have our policemen be the leaders in getting people off the streets, and especially getting drug dealers off the streets, and then we can get more willing participation in these other programs. I've been to Union Gospel Mission, I've been to Camp Hope, and I've seen the challenges that they face, and they're huge issues, but I think it all starts with get them off the streets and then go from there.
Well said. A lot of info. I, what stood out to me was the 63% with mental health or substance abuse problems. And I liked what Commissioner Curtis said, maybe we can readjust our percentages of how we're funding, you know, our total dollar amount. It appears to me that the outreach might be the answer. I'm not an expert, but just looking at the numbers presented, that might be the approach, because the, what was it, 36 repeat offenders?
Jail refusals, is that what we-
Those are the repeat jail refusal numbers, roughly.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe that could help target them. But yeah, no, I think meaningful discussion, I appreciate everyone, so.
Yeah, I appreciate this meeting. I wish the city and county could have more meetings like this, at a quarterly or biyearly meeting to talk about these type of issues, because I think as the two largest, I mean, there's 10 people around this, you know, and some on the virtual world, that are in, you know, trying to manage the two largest governments in the county, when it comes to trying to understand these things. And so I appreciate that. Some of the things that I would, I would like to explore more is getting some of this data that I'm wanting to look at. That's still something I really want to try to hone in, and I can figure that out with you guys later. The, the actual numbers for how much is going to rent, how much is going to admin and operations on rental assistance, if there is a way to put some sort of accountability to that rental assistance aspect, I don't know, but that's something that I think we should explore. I love the idea, Kyle, of when you were talking about some sort of a number that's not the 911. I don't know what that is either, but it is another number we can come up with where folks can call in these type of things. I think it might get overwhelming, but I also think our businesses need a method to do this. The other aspect is trying to find, and I'm going to keep advocating for our, you know, our businesses, especially downtown and West Valley folks, is all of City of Yakima folks when it comes to businesses, but we, we have to figure out a way to somehow come to a solution that these guys are starting to feel like they have a champion back on, you know, they have their own rights back, they have their own constitutionally protected rights to actually run a business. And right now, a lot of them are packing up their bags, they're leaving. I talked to a guy today, family's been here for 47 years, he's leaving, he's moving. He's like, I'm out of here, I'm, I'm done, I'm shutting my business, I'm not even selling it, I'm shutting it, and we're moving. He's a longtime staplehood business of this community, and he's leaving. And, and that just breaks my heart, and I asked him why, and he said, crime, homelessness, drugs. I'm done. And, and I don't feel like no one hears me, and I don't feel like anyone cares, and other businesses are the same way over and over and over again when I talk to them. And so somehow, we have got, as local electeds, figure out how to solve this divide and not put, you know, I, I, look, I don't want anyone dying on our streets, period. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I said, we have people dying on our streets, but we also have businesses dying on our streets who are having the same thing. So we have to figure out how to manage and balance the needs of our community. Right now, I feel like the needs are like this, you know, we're balancing this group of folks way higher priority than our businesses. And, and I don't know how to do that, but I think the 10 of us can figure out kind of how to balance that back out a little bit by collaborating.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman DCL.
Yeah, I think this was a great meeting. Couple things stood out. One thing that Commissioner Curtis said was that we need to break out, break down the silos between all of the parties that are working together or towards the same goal. If we can have more of a meeting of the minds and know what the left hand is doing, the right hand is doing, that would be helpful. And I would love to see more permanent supportive housing, and I, and I know that we can't do that ourselves, but maybe we can do some kind of an incentive for businesses to come in and create those. I think, I think there are some coming in, and the more, the better, because I think that's part of the answer, so.
Thank you.
Great, great conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Yeah, I'm here. You know what, I, I'm the last one to speak, and all the fellow council members, I mean, I don't like repeating everything I've said, but man, we had a lot covered, come through tonight. I want to thank our county commissioners for being here. I want to thank our county commissioners for being here. This is an issue that we do need to solve and it's not too late and we keep working together, we'll find something and I'm really proud of everybody. So, I don't have much else to say, but it's, this is a great, great start of getting, getting this rolling. And I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lindy.
Yes, thank you. Listen, it's been, it's been a great conversation. I appreciate the opportunity we've had to come together. I would agree that I think it's something that it should not be a, just a one-time thing, that we should repeat this conversation from time to time. I'm not sure how often, but, but yeah, this shouldn't be the last time. And I'll, I'll agree with just, I mean, we covered a lot of ground, but one thing I will say is that I will agree with Commissioner Curtis on what I, that even though there are circumstances that are, that we didn't create, nevertheless, I think there are things that we can look to for solutions on, you know, be able to pool our talents, use our resources and hopefully in the days to come, we can talk about some of those.
Commissioner McKinney.
I really enjoyed tonight very much. I appreciate all the perspectives and conversation. I do also think it's really well timed. I'm happy that Commissioner Curtis has represented the board on these issues, but I, I will emphasize that, you know, when I came in and saw that there was a lot of opportunity for some different decisions. And I think actually really my, how I felt coming in to approach it was similar to what we're talking about now, which is that, hey, we didn't create these problems, but we're not just going to sit around and whine about it. And so, this is a Titanic in the ocean and we're trying to avoid the iceberg. The, the well timed, I would say, is because the, the board, the commissioners board has already set in, set in sequence the events that are allowing us to have these types of conversations and be prepared. That was making sure that all the providers were required to be on HMIS. That is requiring, telling them we are going to require data. It's modifying our contracts when no one had ever thought that we even had the ability to modify them. And you know what, we're asserting ourselves to modify our contracts where we can. We are coming up on the five-year plan. We have a city council that wants to work with a board who wants to work with the city council. There are a lot, and I think Seattle might have died and is coming back to life and perhaps realized the error of their ways. I'm not sure about the tax situation, but it does seem that they've abandoned their goal to shut down jails, which I think helps us with our desire to build new jails. So, I think that there are a lot of golden opportunities that are coming our way and trying to think creatively and strategically is my favorite thing to do and use the system that they have created against them to get the outcomes the, we want. So, I am excited to partner with you further.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just say that we've covered a lot of ground. I'm very, very excited that we've had this conversation and as you know, we are going to have follow-up meetings. But first, I want to recognize and applaud the City of Yakima Council. You have spent at least the last two and a half years that I've been a commissioner, seven study sessions on this issue, if not more. You are a very engaged council, you are striving for solutions and I think our community should be proud that they have representatives that care and are hearing the concerns on the front line. I also want to acknowledge and give praise to our Human Services Department, Esther and her team. They got a difficult job. Not only is the, the issue, the challenge out there complex, but you got three commissioners that they got to deal with. And Esther and her team, they answer very, very promptly and they're working overtime in order to ensure that we have what we need to move us forward. And the last thing, I just want to thank the community. You know, we, our community is engaged, they want solutions and they're coming to the table and we just, we just need to listen to them. And I think we, we can get through this together. Thank you.
So, I'm going to pretty much agree with what was said tonight. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for being here. I believe it's been very productive, very helpful. I think one of the key takeaways is that we continue to work together in partnership, finding common solutions and the more that we can agree on how can we align our codes together, those kinds of things that will help us so that it's functioning the same throughout the county will be, will be helpful. Commissioner Lindy, I want to thank you too for bringing up the faith community. I think there's a huge potential in our community, from our faith community to, to step up. If we, we give them the direction to do that and the request to do that. I'm in a church that's very active in the community in a lot of ways and I know we, we would be responsive to that. So, to encourage them to do the things that are the most helpful and not the things that are, that are less helpful. There are a lot of challenges and I think the whole first three quarters of the meeting, we were, we were all talking about those challenges. But the fact that we were able to draw it back to, let's talk about how we can come to solution for those promises, I think is, is very promising and a lot of good conversations come out of that in terms of directions that we can work. We need to continue to work together as the electeds in this community, working with our legislators in the state to continue to pressure for the kinds of changes that we need and other communities need to be able to bring solutions to the problems we're facing. So, again, just thank you, the council, for all the active participation tonight and again, the commissioners.
There's going to be a public comment now.
Yeah, and we are going to, yes. So, we're just kind of wrapping up this part. Thank you, Mrs. Seuss, for being here. We're going to move into, if I can find my agenda, well, actually, the only thing left is public comment. So, we are going to have 15 minutes of public comment this evening. It'll be the standard procedure. If you want to make public comment, please make sure you fill out a slip in the back, give it to the city clerk. You'll have two and a half minutes when you come to the podium. Please tell us your name and the city where you live. So, first on the public comment list is Mr. DeVilla.
Council and county commissioners, I'm Rick DeVilla, resident of Yakima for 23 years and come from the City of Everett, the mayor's office. So, I have around 40 years of public service, both in the community and at state government. And I just wanted to, knowing how this is such a heavy lift, not only for the community but for policymakers, is to put a couple of items in addition to the heavy lifting. One, I've attended public forums that I've suggested to add on to the menu. There's two components that I see a great need to have some input and feedback. One of them, there is an absence of workforce development, employment, and if you want to talk about recidivism, that that is a major key and strategy to lessen that is when a person goes through subsidized housing, you cannot build too many apartments and so forth, you have to find a way to getting your participants in so they can afford and they can pay for the rent themselves. And so, and then the other piece that I would like to include in this conversation is you have the policymakers, you have the service providers, you have the homeless themselves, but a major element, and I can only speak about this from a personal standpoint, is to engage the families that are impacted by homeless and dealing with homelessness and addiction and so forth. And like, and the other thing, I know it's, some of the big issue is money. There are at least six state agencies that have money, they have staffing and they have offices in Yakima. As a voc rehab counselor, when I was there at the three level, the senior level, I had, the state rehab agency has about 300 statewide in six different regions. As an individual case management counselor, I had access to quarter of a million dollars every year that I could spend.
Mr. De, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much.
My name's Tony Sandoval. I'm resident District Four, I'm District Three, councilman commissioners. I came this close from being homeless, so there's some holes in some of these providers. I'm probably not even part of the statistic. I'll just give you my experience. My duplex was sold, so when your duplex is sold by somebody else, you got 90 days to vacate unless that new owner decides to, you know, rent to you. So, my, my clock was ticking as far as vacate. So, he says, why don't you try about this rental assistance? So, I did go. I was ashamed, but I went. And they said, do you have to come in at a certain time? I did. Nothing. They didn't take my name down. You got to stack, well, can you guys take my name? No, you got to come back in line. Nothing. Then finally, somebody called me to go to a meeting and I show up and I go, this is the wrong meeting. This is the wrong, this is wrong because you got to go back again. Well, I, I'm kind of glad I didn't, I wasn't able to be helped, but there is some holes from these agencies and you guys got to look into it deeper. All of them, I would say all of them. I'll give you an example of other things that's happened. What we're missing here is the agencies themselves, with the exception of one. Those are the individuals that are going to give you these numbers you guys have been talking about. You guys been, you know, ball, ball, balling back and forth, you know, what can we do? You got to have these agencies that actually work with a lot of these individuals to give you the numbers. And I, I am extremely shocked that those numbers aren't available to, to you guys, to anybody now. They should be out there. Anything, any experience I've had, you have to have numbers to get money. And you guys talked about all this, this happening in our community, it happened in where we live. Everything you guys talked about happened where I live. We're down to finally graffiti. Lot of domestic violence, drug dealing, I mean, I could go on, everything you guys talked about, we did it. But we as a community took the power into our own hands, we did something about it. We also worked with, actually, the current chief on resolving some of the part on the illegal stuff.
Mr. Stuntler, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Next is Mike K.
Good evening, commissioners, members of council. I'm Michael K. I'm the CEO of Gray City Outreach, who runs Camp Hope. It's a county-funded project. I want to touch on a couple of things that wasn't said here tonight and I think this is really, really key. Commissioner Curtis slightly touched on it, but we are, we have actually finally broke ground on a behavioral health center that's going to be embedded inside of a homeless shelter that is low barrier. Nobody else is doing that. That's happening here. It's happening on the property that you lease us with somebody else that collaborates with us. They're not taking county funding for it, they're doing that. That's important because these people that are on the street, aren't on the street because they want to be, they're on the street because they're mentally ill. That's where it comes down to. And until we get mental health providers like comprehensive to be out there more, you're not going to arrest your way out of homelessness. I don't care how big of a jail you build, I don't care whose Kool-Aid you're drinking on that, it's not going to happen. The guys wearing blue uniforms have better things to do than to be chasing homeless people around and it's a misnomer that they're out there by themselves. Yakima police calls our agency multiple times to go with them on stuff. Not just in Yakima, but we go county-wide. We're the only ones to be doing that right now on a regular basis. I know Commissioner Curtis knows that because he hears that all the time. It's important for you to realize that this homeless thing isn't going away. We are on the cusp of it. One of the reasons we're on the cusp of it is we don't have a regionalized shelter system. All of our shelters are in Yakima, which means if they don't work out at Union Gospel Mission, we have to pick them up and bring them to ours or they're on the streets. That's how that goes. If we had a regionalized shelter system county-wide, my thought is you'd have people that don't want to be in Yakima, but they'd much rather be in Toppenish or they'd much rather be somewhere else. The other thing I want to leave you with is this, it's a misnomer that low barrier means high crime. If you'd have asked Captain Janice for our numbers, in five years, we were, they were called to our property 546 times. They were on our property 1,378 times dropping somebody off. Of the 546 times that they were there dropping somebody off in our database, they had to come back in that 546 times, 312 times for the person that they dropped off. So, it's not a matter of they didn't want services, it's a behavioral health thing. If you understand what I'm talking about. When we looked at the fire chief and we, we asked the fire chief for numbers that were there, understand these people are much better in a shelter setting than they are on your streets because it's centralized. We also divert a lot of the drawdown on your public safety folks. Sheriff Odell will tell you that 10 times over. The other thing is Narcan is a big deal. We were asked to put those numbers together. Out of five years, we've deployed Narcan eight times. Other agencies are deploying them 13 times.
Mr. K, I'm sorry about your, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anybody that has further comments I'd like to make to the council that we can share with the county, you may email that to us and we'd be willing, the city would be willing to share that information with the county, so. All right, the last person is Mr. Corsi.
I am Tony Corsi. Where I lay my head is where I'm at. I am the living document. I am one that you guys decided have a different program set. I am the one that went to Homeland Security and signed for the monies. You're not going to find me because I didn't do my job because you guys or the people before you took it away. Ain't going to buy it, ain't going to have it. I'm only probably the one that Mr. Trump and Madison Square Garden heard some very interesting language because some city council members in another city, Seela, decided to tell me about a Ford Explorer and a dump truck because of my water right claim. Didn't happen. So, now listen to this little idea. You go up a tannum, all the way up to Wiley City, you make a left and you go all the way up to the border. You put a fence there. Yakima Nation, on one side they have casino machines, on the other side you have card games. In between there, you have a restaurant. Put the trolleys, because the trolleys went up there. Yeah, I know about Seela. We're not done with that issue either. So, yeah, and I go all the way back to Christine Gregwire and further back than that. So, they trusted me and I've been vetted. And so, if my wife wants to make a decision, I'm helping her out on that, but she's not going to get everything. Understood, understand, comprehend, capisce? And my phone number's been out there and you guys had meetings with William O Douglas's committee groups and nobody had that meeting. So, all this BS is just BS. I don't, I'm not an actor.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Excuse me one second.
All right, commissioners, we are at the end of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Move to adjourn.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to the next city council regular meeting on May 6th, beginning with an executive session at 5:00 PM here at City Hall.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to adjourn to the next city council regular meeting here at City Hall, May the 6th, 2025, beginning with an executive session at 5:00 o'clock. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear.
Leo said yea.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 7:00, we are adjourned.